... meeting. We'll start with agenda, item 1A. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weinroth.
I'm present.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a forum with seven county commissioners present here in the chambers. We'll move now to 1B and 1C if you'll please rise and join me in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear God, bless this meeting convened in goodwill for the benefit of those we serve. Give us the strength to overcome the obstacles we shall surely meet and the wisdom to make good use of the opportunities we shall surely find. Please watch over and give thanks to the men and women in law enforcement who serve our community every day under great and difficult circumstances and oftentimes very dangerous. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We'll move now to agenda, item 2A, additions, deletions, and substitutions. Madam Administrator, you're recognized, ma'am.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the board. I have no add, delete, or substitution for today.
Move to adopt the agenda.
Very good. Motion made by Vice Mayor Weinroth is seconded by Commissioner Weiss to adopt the agenda as published. All in favor? All opposed? The agenda is adopted, 7 to 0. We'll move now to the consent agenda. Would any member of the Board of County Commissioners wish to pull any item from the consent agenda?
Move the consent agenda.
Are there any comments from the public? Commissioner Bernard.
No, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth to approve the consent agenda as published, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. All in favor? All opposed? The consent agenda passes 7 to 0. I'd like to make a point of personal privilege that is not published on the agenda, and I'll ask Commissioner Bernard to make a motion to move forward a proclamation honoring the service and life of Special Agent Wizant.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the proclamation for Special Agent Wizant.
I'd like to second that motion. He was my constituent.
Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor? All opposed? That item passes 7 to 0. I'd also like a moment of time to introduce some special guests that we have here in the chambers. As you all know, this past year and a half has been particularly tumultuous and combative in society. Community has really come together very well, and I'm proud of the product that Palm Beach County has delivered. But the Board of County Commissioners and the visitors to this facility are well aware of the dangers that are present in the community at large, and those are members of the public that serve in public office. And so we've worked, and Verdini Baker in particular, along with our new Director of Facilities and Operations, Isame, along with Captain Kribda and Lieutenant Miller, and all the members of the Court Services Division have worked together to bring to bear resources to protect the visitors and commissioners and staff of this government. And so we have three handlers from the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, along with their new Canines who will be patrolling in rotation our facilities. So it's an honor now to present to the Board of County Commissioners Deputy Gasparini with Canine Blackjack. You can just raise your hand here to your left. Deputy Rodriguez with Canine ATI to the right. And then Deputy Radford with Canine Goku.
There you go.
Oh, he just went outside. Of course he did. Well, these incredible animals and their handlers, who are professional law enforcement officers, serve every day to protect us and the residents and visitors to our community. We're delighted and privileged to have them serving on our behalf. And you'll see them working in our offices and in the chambers and around the building and facilities in general, and we're very honored to have them. So let's give them a round of applause. And if I could take one more point of personal privilege to now present the proclamation to the Special Agent and his family and members that are here in attendance, I would appreciate Just by way, very quick background. You'll recall during the most challenging and difficult times of the pandemic, the Board of County Commissioners, along with the administration and the Incident Commander, Ms. Verdini Baker, assembled a very diverse and broad team known as the COVID Education and Compliance Team. And these were the men and women, both in law enforcement and code enforcement and in professional staff, that really went out during the most challenging times of this pandemic to educate the public and the businesses on the importance of all the social distancing protocols and all the regulations and laws that were handed down, both by Governor DeSantis and by the Incident Commander and members of the Board of County Commissioners, to keep this community safe. I can only say that it was a very, very dangerous challenge. While most of the community and most of the world, in fact, remain inside their homes or away from their workspaces, there were men and women that very bravely and under very challenging circumstances went out into the community and really helped this community get back on its feet in a very safe and very effective manner while also maintaining the integrity of our local economy, which of course now is very much thriving. I was privileged to work directly with this team. I had gone out with them on a few occasions to observe, and it was very, very impressive, very well done, very professional. I can tell you that the members of the public that they interacted with and the business owners, who really took the brunt, mostly in the hospitality and service industry, of the closures and restrictions that were in place, were very more often than not very delighted and very, I would say, thankful to have the assistance of the COVID Education and Compliance Team. And I recall on one occasion receiving a call from Secretary Rivkies, who serves as the Governor's appointee as a Surgeon General of Florida. And he had read about a white paper regarding this team and its effectiveness. And he was very much impressed and thankful and wanted to make it a blueprint for the rest of Florida. And as he saw us go through the pandemic, there were other jurisdictions and other counties that assembled the very diverse team that we had, from state law enforcement to the county sheriff's office to our zoning and code enforcement officers, along with the city municipal police officers and code enforcement officers. One of the gentlemen that I had the privilege of working directly with, and I know that many in this community and in this chamber, including County Administrator Verdini Baker, Assistant County Administrator Patrick Rutter, Assistant County Administrator Todd Bonlaren, and the rest of the professional team, Ramsey Buckley, who's the Executive Director of Plan and Zoning and Building, all got to know this gentleman, Special Agent Wizant, very well. He was always excited to be at the roll call. He was always proactive in his duties. He was always professional in his conduct. And I can tell you from personal experience that through their enforcement and education activities, I have no doubt in my mind that they saved not only thousands of lives, but thousands of businesses and jobs at one of the most challenging points in the history of this county and this incredible country. And for that, we're very thankful for the service of the men and women on the COVID Education and Compliance Team. We're joined here today by Ruby Wizant, who's the wife of the Special Agent, along with three children, two grandchildren, and friends, family, and members of the Division of Law Enforcement of Alcoholic Beverages and Tobacco. And I say, as a former state law enforcement officer, I served with the Florida Wildlife Commission for several years as a law enforcement officer, that the men and women of this division of law enforcement and the men and women in state law enforcement in general are unsung heroes. They serve oftentimes in the shadows by themselves without much recognition in very dangerous circumstances. These men and women, particularly in this division of law enforcement, go out, usually I would hope in teams of two, but oftentimes by themselves, to very combative situations, very dangerous situations, and oftentimes their work goes unrecognized. In this instance, the Special Agent did pass away from COVID-19, as thousands of members of our community have. And today, this proclamation honors his service and his sacrifice to this community that we love so dearly. So this proclamation is declaring June 8, 2021, as Special Agent Adam Wizant Day in Palm Beach County. Whereas Adam began his career in law enforcement at the age of 18 with the State of Texas Department of Corrections, rising to the rank of Sergeant, prior to transferring to Angelina County Sheriff's Office. And whereas while the Angelina County Sheriff's Office, Adam coordinated the mass casualty investigation of the Space Shuttle Columbia in 2003. And whereas in 2013, Adam and his family moved to Florida, where he began his career with the state, first with the Department of Agriculture, then with the Department of Alcoholic Beverages and Tobacco, transferring to the West Palm Beach Office in 2017. Whereas during, in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, Adam was assigned to the Palm Beach County COVID Education and Compliance Team as part of the county, municipal, and state multi-jurisdictional team. And whereas on April 27, 2021, Adam passed away after fighting a brave battle against COVID-19, the virus that he combated day and night as a member of the COVID Education and Compliance Team. And whereas to the family of Special Agent Adam Wizant, the citizens of Palm Beach County owe gratitude beyond words for your loss, and we are distraught by his passing, and we are also inspired by his life. We now declare June 8, 2021, in Palm Beach County, as Special Agent Adam Wizant Day. Be it further proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, that this proclamation is duly sealed, ribboned, and executed by the members of this board. The foregoing proclamation was sponsored by Mayor Dave Kerner, and upon unanimous consent of the board, the mayor declares the proclamation duly enacted. Thank I know these words and the gesture here today will give little comfort to the passing of a very special man in your family, your husband, ma'am. But I'd like to invite any member of your family or a member of the Division of Law Enforcement to make any comments in his honor, and the floor is yours.
I would just like to say thank you to everybody here. And to the law enforcement department that supported us through all of this, and that's with the side wheel that backed them up through all this. And I thank you very much.
I'm going to step down and join you to present this proclamation, but I want you and your family and the members of the Division of Law Enforcement to know that the Board of County Commissioners and the residents of this community will always have your back, the back of law enforcement, of ABT, and law enforcement in general. And it's an honor to be with you today, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Mr. McKinley, you're recognized, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. As Special Agent's Commissioner, I want to thank the family for his service and for being here with us today. And Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'd also like to ask for a point of personal privilege. It came to my attention last night from former school board member, Michael Mergio, that two of my constituents lost their son late last year, and I'd just like to recognize him. He's highly decorated retired Navy SEAL, Michael Raymond Goodbo, otherwise known as Goodie, to his family, and he died in late November from injuries sustained while serving his country overseas. I just want to read into the record some of his accomplishments in service. So as a Navy SEAL, he earned the Silver Star Medal for Extraordinary Heroism, four Bronze Star Medals, two with Valor Device, three Defense Meritorious Service Medals, the Joint Service Commendation Medal, the Navy and Marine Corps Commendation Medal, the Joint Service Achievement Medal with Valor Device, three Joint Service Achievement Medals, the Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal, Combat Action Ribbon, Navy Presidential Unit Citation Medal, Afghanistan Campaign Medal, Iraq Campaign Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, five Sea Service Deployment Ribbons, who is an expert rifleman and an expert pistol shot. He will be remembered for his spirit. And thank you. I'll say prayers for his family and thank him for his service to our country. And he was buried in the National Cemetery in Arlington, Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley, for that recognition. An incredible soldier. Gave the ultimate sacrifice. We've completed the consent agenda. We'll move now to item 4, special presentations. We're delighted to have Dr. Alina Lonzo, Director of Florida Department of Health. We're going to do our best to keep this particular update to 10 minutes, including board questions.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, County Administrator, Ms. Baker. Very happy to be here once again. I have my presentation today. You're going to see some different slides from usual for several reasons. I'm going to go through quickly so we can have plenty of questions. Our first slide shows the, our number of cases continue to go down very nicely, a nice decline here. You can see that we have 33,193,680 total cases with only 10,150 new cases. Every case is too many, but it has definitely been going down steadily in the last 30 days. The total deaths, 594,802, with 225 new deaths. There's a slight little bump going up here, but in general, again, the deaths have been going down. This is from the CDC COVID data tracker. I suggest that any of you that want this information, it's done very nicely and very good graphs. That's the website. The, this trend is continuing not only in Florida, but also here in Palm Beach County. So we're pretty much in track with what the nation is doing at this point. This is the level of community transmission, and I'm very happy to report, this is what we showed at the last meeting, where we had turned into orange as a way, instead of the high amount, we had gone to substantial transmission. And look at us now, we're in the moderate. So we have continued to go down, and so has the rest of the state, a lot more moderate. And all the, all the counties that were in red, including Dade County, has gone to orange. We've gone to yellow. Okeechobee, Osceola, and Hardy have all gone to orange. Hillsborough, Lake, right there, and Lee have also gone to, what's that? Oh, have gone. There was one other little county out here that I didn't mention, that's Franklin. Ed has gone to yellow. So Franklin went from red to yellow. We went from substantial to moderate. So that's really good. Let me talk a little bit about a new dashboard that's come our way. According to the state, they're going to be migrating the old dashboard, which is no longer available on the website, to a new dashboard called Qlik. Don't know who came up with that. Counties have been given a chance to make suggestions up to the state. Of course, we told them we wanted everything that was on there, plus maps with zip codes and all the information that we've been having to do ourselves. We want the new dashboard to have that. We'll see what we get. We asked for everything. Training will, the training for the new dashboard, as well as the first look, will come sometime in the next few weeks. We don't have an exact date yet, but it is coming. For now, the COVID-19 Weekly Situation State Overview will be available to us each Friday. And it has some of the county data in a chart format, but it doesn't look anything like what we had before. So I'm going to present you some of the pages from that report. The first one is the Weekly Situation State Overview, which shows the total number of cases and the cumulative, and it shows you the previous week. So it gives you a look at how much we have coming in the new week, sort of like what we've been doing with the new cases that we've reported to the municipalities, very similar. And it also includes new deaths. It also shows the vaccination rate for the first doses and the series completed. And that, of course, you can do a percentage to see what that is. The most important one, I think, is this one, is the vaccine by age groups, because this breaks it down where you can see that, for example, in the 12 to 19-year-old, for the population that is available to be vaccinated, and therefore it tells you the percent. So for the entire population, we have about 53% of that population in Florida vaccinated. Keep in mind that a very large number of that 53 belongs to the 65 and over who have very vigorously pursued the vaccine and have been vaccinated quite a bit. The lower age groups, obviously, you see that the younger they are, the less vaccine that has been taken up, right? And you see the 65 at 82%. We've gone all the way up to 84%. So that is consistent with what we're seeing here in Palm Beach County. And then it gives you the new cases so that you can see how they have been going down for the past 10 weeks, very similar to what we are seeing proportionally. Another piece that is useful is that it does give you a little bit of a county overview, but this is all that we're getting. It's a large chart, which starts with Florida. These are the headings. It has the new population for 2021. So when you do your calculations now, we'll have to use this, this population. We had stuck with the 2020, 2019 population because we wanted to keep it consistent. So this is the population they're using now. It tells you how many people have been vaccinated and the percent of 12 years old and over that have been vaccinated. Again, this is made up by a lot of the 65 and over. Then it shows you the number of cases and the case positivity, which is the total positivity of all cumulative. And then it shows you the previous week, the number of people vaccinated, the cases, the new case positivity for the state is 3.6. And then it shows you the cases per 100,000 population, which gives you another percentage that is very important because you take that population, it gives you a better glimpse of what it looks like. Then it's broken down by county. So you can, I took the three top counties that we compare ourselves to, Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach. Ours for this particular date, which was from May 28 through June 3, we were at 3.2%. The daily positivity for 65 was 2.8. So we have maintained that low positivity, which is what put us in yellow. That's why we had, all of us in Epi and the state had been looking for that below 5 so that we could start seeing this trend. The other demographics that we have is an overview by age. This is very similar to the charts that I had been showing you with the breakdown of certain ages where the new cases are coming in. And so again, you have the population, the number of people vaccinated, the over 12, the cases, the case positivity for the total positivity, this is what we call the total positivity, and then the previous week showing those numbers. What we can see here is that 82.8 cases per 100,000 is the highest number. It's also the, a high number in this age group of 30 to 39. And you can see the percentages of the new cases, the positivity in the 12 years old and below, which cannot be vaccinated, they have a 3.6 new case positivity. That is concerning because these children cannot be vaccinated yet. So hopefully that vaccine will be coming soon, perhaps by summer or later, not by summer, I'm sorry, but in the next few months. So just, just to keep that in mind. So that, that is also useful to take a look at the different age groups and not just look at the total number of people that we vaccinated. In terms of the healthcare district, I am, I want to show you some of their data, just to give you a glimpse of what they have been doing and how hard they have been working in order to protect our community. They have given a total of 212,856 vaccines. This is with the total number that we have vaccinated of 752,237 vaccines. They have given a total of 28% of our vaccinations in this community. The predominant vaccine is Pfizer. It shows you here the numbers, followed by Moderna, and then the J&amp;J or the Jensen vaccine. The majority of their vaccinations were done at the fairgrounds with 107,108 doses, followed by South County, and then the North County Palm Beach Gardens Recreation Facility, 74% of the vaccine was given to those 50 and older. Racially, 82% of the vaccine was received by whites and only 6% by black. As far as ethnicity, 76 was given to non-Hispanics and 18% to Hispanics. Male and female, the females are outracing the males by a little bit. And then this graph down here shows you the highest peak with 4,081 vaccines done in one day. They have done a phenomenal job. But as you can see, just as the nation has seen a decrease in slowing down of vaccination, so have the healthcare district, so have we at the Health Department, and just in general, the number of vaccines have been going down. Now, that is not surprising. When supply exceeds demand, the demand for the vaccines go down. So we expect that. But we are letting you know that we're still increasing our vaccinations, and that is a good thing. So what we have to do now is that we have to go out into the community and reach out to those who haven't been vaccinated or who are sitting on the fence or who are just not quite motivated to do it yet. So the healthcare district is concentrating on going out into three areas. One are the schoolchildren and their families. The other is to entertainment areas such as Clematis, Delray, Lake Worth. They've been there. They're going to be going to other entertainment areas. And then finally, with their mobile unit, they're also reaching out into hard-to-reach communities, as well as to businesses or locations that are requesting them to come to them to vaccinate. For the Health Department, our vaccination efforts continue to operate at the Mid-County Senior Center at 3680 Lake Worth Road in Lake Worth. We're providing both Moderna and Pfizer vaccine to the public with both appointments and walk-in or just walk up to our site. There, we have continued to do this, even though the numbers are very low, but we want to assure that there's still a government site being provided to the public and that there is a place where people feel safe going to and that they, in some places, when they go, they're having problems. They're asking for different documentation, different things that they may not have. And so we're able to help them, and they feel safe coming there. We will continue to monitor that and see at what point it is no longer necessary, and then we will be closing that facility down. But for now, we certainly want to wait for, to see They've been there. They're going to be going to other entertainment areas. And then finally, with their mobile unit, they're also reaching out into hard-to-reach communities as well as to businesses or locations that are requesting them to come to them to vaccinate. For the Health Department, our vaccination efforts continue to operate at the Mid-County Senior Center at 3680 Lake Worth Road in Lake Worth. We're providing both Moderna and Pfizer vaccine to the public with both appointments and walk-in or just walk up to our site. There, we have continued to do this even though the numbers are very low, but we want to assure that there's still a government site being provided to the public and that there is a place where people feel safe going to and that they, in some places, when they go, they're having problems. They're asking for different documentation, different things that they may not have. And so we're able to help them and they feel safe coming there. We will continue to monitor that and see at what point it is no longer necessary, and then we will be closing that facility down. But for now, we certainly want to wait for, to see what happens through the Memorial Day weekend, see what those numbers look like, and also take a look at after the Fourth of July. As you know, that's when we spiked last year. So we want to keep an eye on that. We've done enhanced services at our Seal Brumbeck Health Center in Belle Glade. That location is 38754 State Road 80. That's 38754 State Road 80, just as you arrive into the Glades. On June 26, well, let me finish that with saying also that in addition to vaccinations at that site, we're also doing testing for the public there in the Glades, in the whole Glades area. We now have both the PCR, which we've done since we started on June 1. We've done 102 tests, and we've added the rapid test. There was a high demand for the rapid test. The rapid tests are getting harder to get in the community. Since Friday, we've done 11 rapid tests. As the vaccination numbers have decreased, staff are now able to deploy to mobile units or carrying to hard-built businesses inside their businesses. And we're going to also to other community organizations and other outreach efforts. This, on June 26, we will be at Mike Clinic up in Jupiter. And then we have plans to work with the Salvation Army, the Esperanza Center, which is right here in West Palm Beach. And we're engaged in making plans, going there, vaccinating, and perhaps having a long-term relationship with them to continue vaccinating in those areas. We're also coordinating with Feeding South Florida, working with strike teams that are coming down and vaccinating at churches and other community centers throughout the county. Finally, we're working closely with the county administration here to bring monoclonal antibody services to Palm Beach County for those who are uninsured or underinsured. That has been a treatment that needs more medical attention. We're also working with the Medical Society to educate the physicians on how to use it and when to use it and how to get patients that are recently diagnosed with the COVID on this therapy so that they don't have long-term consequences and/or have to be admitted to the hospital. So with that, I'm going to present to you the maps. This is the vaccination by zip codes. What, I broke it up so I could put it on the slide. You can't read the numbers or the percentages, but it will be on the website and you can zero in and read that a little more clearly. It didn't translate very well to the PowerPoint. But as you can see, we have the lowest number in terms of vaccination is 25 to 40%. The, this is Belle Glade. They are in the darker blue of 40 to 55%. This would be the Pahokee area, South Bay. And then you see that throughout the county, we have more and more of the darker blue and just a couple spots left up here in the West Palm area with the lighter blue of that 25 to 40%. So definitely, the numbers are trending up the way we want it. This is through May. We did not include the 12-year-old and older because we only had two weeks of that data, and it would have been very misleading. So this is 16 and above. And then finally, I also told you I would bring you the cases by census tracts that we gave to the municipalities. And as you can see here, at one time, all of these, all of the census tracts were bright red. These numbers are a little confusing. These lighter orange should be the 6 to 7, and these darker ones are the 8 to 13. There's only six areas. This is, this, this road here is the Seminole Pratt Whitney. So this is, and this is Okeechobee going across here. So we have this census tract, which is north of Okeechobee, and this census tract, and then we have three small census tracts here, very tiny ones. This is in the Lake Worth area, a little bit south, and this is down towards, this is Clintmore. And this is, I forgot what street, but down towards the Delray Boca area. So we're doing very well with new cases. They go up and down, but definitely a big change, and that's why we've turned into the yellow moderate as opposed to the substantial or the high. We're hoping that we can keep this up and continue. My expectation is to be very closely looking at Fourth of July, Memorial Day, and as we go into the holidays, I expect that we'll see small increases, like little bumps along the road, but not sustained curve going straight up because of the vaccinations and what a great job we have been doing with vaccines across the entire state of Florida. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mary, who's going to give us all our graphs and our other data.
Thank you, Dr. Alonso. We're delighted and privileged to have our Director of Emergency Management for Palm Beach County, Mary Blakeney.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker. I'll quickly go through the presentation of our COVID-19 Phase Restart Program. You can follow along on the matrix that I provided to you. As a point of clarification, as Dr. Alonso said, the state will no longer be collecting, at this point, a majority of the data that we've been using to prepare this as they migrate to a new system. We don't know what data we'll be getting from this point forward or when, but I want you to be aware that today's report is based on the data that was collected from the state, which the data collection ended on June 3. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. Regarding total tested positivity, the upper right graph shows the overall positivity rate, which has decreased for the fifth straight week, currently at 16.29%. The lower left-hand graph indicates the last month of testing, and the red line is a seven-day running average. Regarding daily lab positivity, this week, we saw the seven-day positivity rate increase slightly, yet the 14-day positivity rate has continued to drop for the sixth week in a row. The lower-left-hand graph shows our daily lab positivity rate averaging 2.97, which is below the targeted 5%. Regarding our hospital census, as the chart in the lower left shows, over the last three weeks, we saw a decrease in patients hospitalized with COVID-19. We are currently seeing less than 3% of our total hospital beds countywide being used for COVID-19. The hospitals are no longer reporting emergency room visits with COVID-like illnesses. So we do not have that data. Regarding COVID-19 deaths, the graph in the upper-right corner shows that our COVID-19-related deaths have declined. Our death rate currently stands at 1.93%. Regarding positive ICU cases, over the last month, we've seen our COVID-19 patients in our intensive care units countywide fluctuate. The graph in the upper-right shows the overall COVID ICU cases since June of 2020. The graph in the left corner shows the last two weeks' trend. At this current time, approximately 33 patients a day account for the ICU bed utilization countywide. As far as Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Med Alerts, this is a representative of a countywide sample of individuals calling 911 with COVID-like symptoms. We can see by the chart in the lower-left corner that med alerts have declined. The past week, the average was less than two patients per day. Regarding testing, we have conducted 912,611 tests within the county. We still continue to have access to over 115 sites. And, and working with our Public Affairs Department, we continue to provide a list of resources on the county website where residents can go for testing. Regarding our vaccination efforts, we continue to have multi-agency leadership calls and state calls on a weekly basis. Since we have transitioned away from our mass vaccination site, with the exception of the Department of Health site, we have shifted to the mobile vaccination strategy. Working with the Healthcare District, mobile vaccination opportunities are available to our municipal and community partners while we are still leveraging the state, who is providing resources to target vaccine distribution within our county. The Healthcare District Mobile Plan includes targeting children as young as 12 at their mobile vaccination sites in partnership with the School District of Palm Beach County. And those locations are at various school district locations. The Healthcare District has a very diverse schedule of locations posted on their website and can also be accessed through our county's website. So in closing, our previous presentation of the CPR matrix showed no red indicators, yet this week, we have three indicators. We are seeing our community response to having vaccinated over 752,000 people is beginning to pay off. We need to continue encouraging people to get vaccinated while we still wear a mask, wash our hands, and watch our distance. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Blakeney. We're going to open it up to questions to members of the board, but I just wanted to make two quick points. First of all, thank you for this wonderful presentation. There's a lot of great, great data and indicators within it. Obviously, we still have our own challenges ahead of us, which are unknown. But regarding the external efforts that the county's made, we have a very good update on that. But I wanted to just thank Dr. Alonso, who participated in what we call a Town Hall with, led by Administrator Baker. I had an opportunity to be a moderator on that panel along with Alisa Delrianda and Mr. Martin. And I think those were the four moderators and myself. We had an incredible panel targeted at our county and constitutional offices. So we are working diligently, as you know, ma'am, to, to make sure that we look inside our own institution to cultivate that trust and information that's needed to make sure that our employees are getting vaccinated. So we thank you, Dr. Alonso, for participating in, in that effort. And also, as you'll recall, Commissioner Bernard brought up the monoclonal antibody treatment several months ago as it emerged. And as we saw, sort of that, I want to say, 20 to 40 age group really suffering from the long-haul effects of COVID-19. Commissioner Bernard's, under his leadership, I brought to our incident commander, Ms. Baker, some efforts and plans using a private provider to make sure that we, as a county, and I'm not aware of any other county that's doing this so proactively, to make sure that we reach out to that, that age group and demographic to make sure that they have access to that monoclonal antibody therapy, which is exceedingly effective, if I understand the science correctly. So thank you for your efforts on that as well. With that, we'll go to Commissioner Bernard, and then Commissioner Weiss, are you recognized?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mary and Dr. Alonso, that was a great, great presentation. I just have several questions. You had mentioned probably, you know, over the summer, you know, kids under 12 potentially can be vaccinated. Are there studies being done right now to test for vaccination of kids under 12?
Yes, VISA is working very strongly on that, and they've made progress. It's just a matter of reaching that critical mass that they need to have in the study to be able to then release. They'll probably go down to age 5.
Okay, so wow, age 5. And I guess if that takes place, then most likely, some of the numbers in regard to some of the positive under that age group probably would also decrease.
Absolutely.
And you had mentioned the monoclonal antibodies. What's, like, how would we work on, you know, getting it to the uninsured and underinsured, if you don't mind?
Well, the idea would be to make the physicians aware of this and have them prescribe the prescriptions so that they can then connect with the agency that would go to their home and give them an infusion. That's how, that's how it works. It's an infusion that has to be done slowly for like about a couple hours. Right now, most of our infusion centers are at cancer centers, and therefore, people who are positive cannot enter that, those centers because you obviously are putting people who are immunocompromised in danger. So they don't allow those to be done. So it is best done either at nursing homes where patients become positive. It's been very effective in stopping deaths because then you don't have the complications of the COVID. They recuperate very fast. So it actually saves money in terms of hospitalizations as well as lives. So nursing homes is a place where we would love to be able to get them to utilize it as well as the private sector. So first, we have to make sure that the physicians are aware of it and willing to prescribe it. It's a prescription. Second, by the county facilitating that provider, that will make it very useful to have a place where the physicians can then refer to in order for, have that person do it at home. And we would then have to also make it public and get education out to the general public. Right now, the way pharmaceutical companies are advertising, they're, they still advertise and do details and bring the doctor's donuts, but the main advertising now is done to the public. And so the public comes to the doctor and says, hey, I want this or that. It's not the way I was taught to do medicine, but that's the facts of life these days. So we have to do a campaign to make this available once it's set up.
Thank you, Dr. Alonso. Last question, I, you mentioned education. And looking at the maps, the map by the zip codes, you know, we have some areas that's got the 25 to 40%, and then some with the 40 to 55%. You know, just kind of like, what type of outreach efforts, you know, are we doing to try to close the gap to get some of these areas, you know, to get vaccinated, if you don't mind?
Well, as usual, the best work that we've been able to accomplish in getting groups of people together is through community organizations. The people trust the community organizations they deal with, and so therefore, that, that is what we're going. So for example, Mike Clinic is going to have a group. Caradad Clinic has done a fantastic job up in Boynton getting vaccines as well as becoming a provider on Florida shots to get actual vaccines. And we've helped them get vaccine in addition to what they've had. So we're reaching out to community groups. Esperanza is a group that has recently formed here in Palm Beach, in West Palm Beach, and they're very interested in working with us. The Salvation Army is another group that has multiple locations, and we will be able to go out to them. Another group that we're trying to get to is businesses. So sometimes in the businesses, we only have 40, 50% vaccination rate. And part of that is, well, I'm busy. I can't get out of work. So we're encouraging businesses to allow people time to get the vaccine if they need to. And certainly, it would be very easy if we go to them and vaccinate at their location. They don't lose any time. We saw that very effective when the Healthcare District went down to Clematis. And thanks to organizers and some very well-connected people that know all the different restaurants, she encouraged them to go and get their employees vaccinated. And so we saw a lot of the folks that actually got vaccinated were workers who are working sometimes 12, 14 hours a day, and when they go home, they don't want to go anywhere. So we're trying to take the opportunity to be there when the person is ready to say yes. For those that are still unwilling to take the vaccine, whether they wanted to have full FDA approval as opposed to emergency and many, many other factors, those people have to, you know, I think most community groups have tried to convince them. We're continuing to do Zooms and things like that to continue to get questions answered. But we're going to take advantage of the people that are ready or at least looking at us and be there so that we can go ahead and put those shots into the arms.
Thank you very much, Dr. Alonso.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. We'll move now to Commissioner Weiss and then to Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you. Couple questions. So Florida is, is moving to a weekly update of the, of the dashboard?
The summary is going to be done weekly. I don't know if that's going to continue as opposed to the 10 or 15 reports that we got before because that's all being migrated to that new click dashboard. That is what I believe is going to be available to the public to see.
And then are you still going to be able to have access and will we have access to the daily numbers in Palm Beach County?
Yes. Remember that the data that goes to Tallahassee comes from us. So we definitely know how many cases we have every day. The reports are good to send the data up, have it verified, cleaned, sometimes adjusted for whatever reasons. for whatever reasons. And, and then we verify that that is correct, and then it gets published. If that doesn't happen, then what we would have would be our own raw data, which is still the same numbers, but a little more difficult to put together. Obviously, when there is a picture of something, it's much easier for people to see it. When we had the graphs, you know, the, the dials with the percentages and all that, that's just visual, but the numbers are the same numbers. So the daily positivity, we will have. The total positivity, we can calculate. Our numbers of vaccines being given, all that are numbers that we can put together.
Okay, good.
I am confident that the new dashboard will be more useful than before.
Well, I think with a million and a half people, any early warning signals or information that might be helpful if something were to change, because things are going in the right direction, but want to be, still keep an eye on things. And I know we have the hospital data through ACHA. We can see that daily and see what's happening in the hospitals.
Several people are not having to report anymore. Nursing homes, for example, are not reporting, the hospitals are not going to be reporting that data. We still have access to nursing homes and to the hospitals. We have the HERC, the Hospital Emergency Regional Coalition that we utilize here. So we still have access to these folks, and we communicate them, if not daily, certainly weekly in different ways. And if they have any problem, they know that they can reach out to the Department of Health through emergency operations. So I expect, it's in their best interest, of course, to keep things steady and not turn up one morning and be Michigan. So that's not going to happen in Palm Beach County.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. We'll move now to Commissioner McKinley and then to Commissioner Moreno.
Thanks. On a happy note, congratulations to Ms. Baker and to Dr. Shepke and Darcy Davis and to you, Dr. Alonzo, for your heroes in medicine recognition by the Palm Beach County Medical Society. It's quite an honor, so congrats to you. A couple of questions. Are we parking a mobile unit at any of these high school graduations?
Not at the graduations, no.
Is that something that we might want to look into?
The healthcare district and the school district have entered into an agreement, formal agreements of where they're going to. So that's something that they would have to talk about.
I can bring it up to Darcy Davis as well as Dr. Finoway over at the school district. But I, I do know that they have been in deep discussions on when and where and how they would allow them on their properties to do this, even though I know graduation is not being held on the school board's property. But I'll bring that up to Darcy and Dr. Finoway for discussion.
Yeah, and they're being held at the fairgrounds.
It's a good suggestion.
Yep. Also, what about Palm Beach State College? Are we doing anything like a once a week type visit to the campuses?
We have, we have been in conversations with all the universities. Mary and I have been talking to them quite a bit. At this point, we have not set up any, the kids aren't back yet. The healthcare district has gone to some events. Mary, what place did they go to?
Yeah. Last week, the healthcare district did go to Palm Beach State College, and they said they had a successful event, so they're planning a follow-up date. And then I know they're in communication with Florida Atlantic University would like a date as well that coincides with students coming in for orientation. So that, that's in the planning process as well.
Okay, wonderful.
Some of the other places also have their own clinics and hopefully be able to vaccinate. That, that would be ideal. I've also suggested to the universities and the colleges that they utilize their students to do their campaigns for them. Don't try to do it themselves because they won't get through. They got to let the kids do it themselves, or the young adults do it themselves.
And Ms. Baker, this question's for you. You know, my office gets requests or my, especially from my aide Lisa out in the glades about trying to get a mobile unit at some of the events there. Is there a way to create a portal where community organizations and even our offices can enter the date of an event, the contact information, the estimated number of people, and put that somewhere for the healthcare district to access as they start to schedule mobile units going around the county, rather than all of us just forwarding emails to whomever we feel the email should be forwarded to on that particular day?
I'll work on that issue. I don't think that's insurmountable. We may be able to utilize a system already in place in order for requests to come in. I do know that we have been working with municipalities as well as other community groups in, in our county so that we can, if we're able to, set up those mobile units in, at those particular events. We've worked with Rivera Beach, Boynton, Del Ray on special events that are happening. I also know that the Fourth of July is coming up, and they're looking at the potential of working with municipalities in, per se, for their Fourth of July events. So there are other community groups they are working with. So yes, that is not insurmountable. Let me look at it and, and get back with the board. I'll send something out.
Yeah, I think it would just make it a lot more organized.
It, it will probably more, be more efficient for everyone.
Okay. And then my last question, I know at the, the last update we had, I had asked, we're three, less than three months away from our seasonal farm workers returning to Palm Beach County. In addition to that, we're just a few months beyond that for a lot of our seasonal equestrian workers coming back into Palm Beach County. Have we initiated any of those conversations with the same people where we did the onsite vaccination programs to already get those dates on the calendar and scheduled? And I would think that we would want to do testing as they come in as well as providing vaccines. So have we started those conversations? If not, what do we need to do to start those conversations?
I have, I have not started those conversations. I don't know if we've done anything with that. But that is an excellent idea. Also, the testing, you know, we, we're sending people to Walgreens, CVS for free testing. There's a lot of places in the county that are charging up to $200 or more dollars for testing. So folks have to be, they don't have to go to those places and pay that kind of money. CVS, Walgreens, other places, take a look and see, they are doing them for free.
Okay. Well, Ms. Baker, let's go ahead and try to set up a meeting with the interested parties and include the equestrian industry in that conversation as well as our growers and our farm labor organizations. I'd like to be proactive instead of reactive this fall.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Thank you. Just a note, one is that I've seen the digital sign on I-95 that says get vaccinated with the county logo on it. If we are doing vaccinations at special events, sporting events and whatnot, I'm, and I don't want to assume because you know what happens when you assume, those are the J and J shots, so people don't have to return for a second shot. Is that correct?
We strive and hope for that. Usually, we're taking both vaccines because some people, you know, want different things. So it becomes a little tricky to handle two vaccines at one time, but we don't want to miss somebody coming up and then not having the right vaccine to give it to them. So we, we're trying to do that.
And inventory and shelf life on the vaccines? I mean, we heard early on about cold storage and whatnot. Can you just give us a tiny little update on inventory and storage?
It's the usual immunization rotations that are, that we do all the times. We have lots of vaccines. That's one of the reasons that some physicians' offices don't carry the vaccine, because it's a lot of work. So what you do is you rotate your vaccine. You know, it has a shelf life of, let's say, two, three months, and so you have to make sure you use that vaccine before it expires. So what you do is you, you bring your new vaccine in, you make sure that you're constantly rotating that, utilizing the vaccine that's the oldest first.
And are we, I know that we have minor league games and a lot of sports tournaments that we can connect with Parks and Rec from, you know, county and the municipalities to know what they have, they're having. And those are your, going to be a lot of your younger set. So are we doing something to coordinate with Parks and Rec?
I think the idea of having a, a site where that could be coordinated is a very good idea to try to pick up all those different ideas. And we put that message out, and people would go to that site to make a, those, to set that up. I think that's a very good idea. That, that way, we wouldn't be hopping around without some coordination.
Plus, a lot of that is your younger crowd, so that, that's the target area we're looking for right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. That concludes Agenda Item 4. We appreciate the hard work and presentations of our Director of Health and our Emergency Manager. Thank you to you both. We'll move now to the regular agenda, Agenda Item 5A. We're delighted to have our beloved property appraiser here with us today in the chambers with Dorothy Jacks for a presentation on property values and the property appraisers' fiscal year 2022 budget proposal. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. I'm not sure I would be beloved in a not-so-good year, but as it is a good year, it is nice to be with you and a pleasure to see you all, especially Commissioner Sacks and Commissioner Moreno. I have made it a habit of coming here every year and speaking to you all just a little bit about property taxes and values and what's happening in the real estate market in Palm Beach County. I did just want to quickly recognize my Finance Director Andrea Simon, my Public Information Officer Becky Robinson, and my Chief Appraiser, Tim Wellmath, who some of you have seen before. We seem to be owning the second row today, so. But I do have a few slides for you. I just want to generally go over some things and happy at the end to answer some questions. It'll be fairly brief. So we are sort of preparing to certify the preliminary tax roll in just a couple weeks here. We did provide an estimated value to Ms. Baker just, just at the end of May. And this begins the 100-day cycle of the property tax process all across the state, and that, of course, ends with the bills being mailed on November 1st. We are looking, I'm going to start with some high-level numbers to give you a sense of the market. Right now, our market value has passed the $300 billion mark this year for the first time. Just to put that into some perspective, we hit $200 billion in 2006. We hit $100 billion in 2001. So in 20 years, we've tripled in value in this county. It has been a very important 20 years in, 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 in the county. Taxable value, $220 billion. Of course, the difference between those two numbers is the Save Our Homes cap and homestead exemption primarily. There's also a cap on non-homesteaded property, doesn't add up as significantly. But I'm going to talk a little bit more about the caps later. Net new construction, another good year. I have a graph in a minute that shows you what that has been over the last five years, so I'll wait to talk about that. An estimated increase of 5.05 percent. This will probably go up slightly. It'll increase a little bit more as we're still adding work to the tax roll right now. But again, just to give you a sense, over the last two years, last year, this figure was 5.51, and in 2019, 5.73. So it appears 5% is our lucky number and hopefully will continue to be. A parcel count increases every year. This is actually new plating, so anytime a plat is broken, so a huge piece of property becomes 200 small pieces, you add 200 parcels that can be taxed to the roll. So plating, that's about a good number we've had for the past, same, same around that number the past few years. The tangible accounts have decreased. Tangible, of course, is business personal property, and that is almost completely related to the pandemic. So this is businesses closing, small businesses probably closing. The number has dropped about 600 since last year. Again, we're still putting tangible value into the system, but the tangible, total tangible tax roll has actually declined slightly this year, again, very related to the pandemic. But everything is being buoyed by the real estate market itself. This is just over time, the past 10 years of market, the top line, and taxable value, the bottom line. I'd just like to show you this because it is a good, steady increase year over year. We have not seen anything dramatic over the last 10 years, and only the theme that values continue to increase. The bottom line, again, taxable value, so the distinction between those two lines is the cap primarily holding the bottom line a little lower. And this number, unless we have some major correction, this, this, this trend of separation will continue. The only time I have seen those two lines come back together was during the Great Recession, when market value plummeted down and pretty much met capped value again, and then they started to separate off again. New construction is very strong. This is a five-year chart showing new construction since 2017. Many important projects are, were completed this year. Probably the thing that struck me was that six out of the top 10 new construction projects were apartment buildings. So this sort of move toward just housing, I mean, just general housing, having housing for people. It, there were a few other notable buildings, and of course, our bread and butter, single family homes. So I just want to say, three, over $3 billion in new construction last year and this year. Remember, new construction is brand-new value. It's value that's never been taxed. It's coming in for the very first time. The land isn't factored into that. The land is always, has been taxed. It might go up in value when a house gets put on it, but this money is coming in for the first time. So let's talk very quickly about the real estate market, just some of my thoughts about it. You know, again, I mentioned residential is Palm Beach County's bread and butter. It is what has held the market together this year. There has been a fair bit of disruption in the commercial sector, but the residential sector has held strong. Over half, I, I will say 70% of the value in the county comes from the residential sector. But also, the other sort of downside, you know, there's always the ying and the yang, isn't there, is that well over half of the residential in the county is homesteaded. So again, that cap impacting its impact, it, it's, it's attribution, if you will, to the whole role in general. The cap this year is at 1.4%. So the rules about the cap is it's 3% or the change in the Consumer Price Index, whichever is less, and it is this year less, it's 1.4%. Last year, it was 1.8%. I have seen years where it's 0.7%. So you see, you really have this sort of ebb and flow of what is that number going to be? And over the 26 years that the cap has been in play, it's only been 3% five times. So it's usually below that 3%. And it's important to know, just because if we have a year where the market doesn't, we don't have as much new construction, or really, it's more about reassessment, it may be a difficult year simply because of that cap. The only time the cap comes off is when you sell. So there is obviously a fair bit of transition, transactioning going on in the market, but not enough for the cap not to continue to sort of control, as it were, our residential value. The commercial sector has a positive increase, but that is a offset mostly by the value of apartments. So apartments are considered commercial because they're income-producing. It's one big property that is then rented out, different from a condo where individual condo units are individually assessed. And apartments have held that number up. Other sectors of the commercial economy have not done quite as well. Office space, we have left fairly neutral this year because of last year's nervousness about people being in offices, although we're also pleased to see that office space seems to be rebounding. There's been a lot of investment in the office space, space. And we've seen that happening both in West Palm Beach and in all the other bigger areas, Palm Beach Gardens, Boca Raton, a lot of investment in office space, which tells us that the larger economy is not, is not forgetting offices. You know, they're, they're going right back to them, which is what we really wondered, I think all of us wondered about, if the pandemic would cause that change. And it isn't simply in Palm Beach County. I mean, it's happening all over the South Florida market and certainly in the major markets across the nation, this interest in office space. I'll also point out again, I said it last year, warehousing continues to really hold its own and grow because of the internet economy. And so commercial is how- is helped by us having sort of a bit more of all of those things, not just the stuff that was, as from a business sense, impacted by the pandemic, which you can think about hotels, restaurants, entertainment complexes, but all, again, offset by those larger values in the commercial group. A couple of thoughts for 2022. Hard to believe that we are halfway through '21, and '21, the values from January through December will set our 2022 numbers. So I know we always, and you do as well, we talk, we talk quite a lot to Ms. Baker and to her staff, her finance staff, about what we're seeing happening. But the good news is the first half of '21 has been very positive. Again, in the residential sector, our biggest piece of value. And, and again, new construction will be, will probably get close to that number. It may not hit $3 billion next year, meaning projects that are finished by the end of this year. But 2023, when you look ahead, will probably be a very big year. There's a number of big projects coming up in Delray, in eastern Delray even. There's also, of course, the, some projects in downtown West Palm that may not finish in time for 2022, but they certainly will for 2023. And then also, there, and then the building in the western part of the county. Certainly, everybody sees it. Westlake continues to show a 100% growth year over year as it adds homes to the tax roll. And residential, again, very powerful in our county. And I will just mention the steady increase in homestead exemption counts. So we are, in fact, seeing the trend that everybody talks about, people moving here from the northeast. They are coming in. They are filing for homestead. Interestingly, we're also seeing quite a lot of people coming from California, who are also coming into Florida. So this, you know, again, homestead exemption is just one of the, of the, of the tax incentives that people may find once they become permanent Florida residents. So we're seeing that number continuing to climb, and I think that's probably a good thing. With that, I'll just say thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. You know, we've had a, we've navigated this really fast-moving year in our office. My staff have been incredible, just working very hard all through the pandemic and really taking care of each other as well, which is what's important. So thank you for having me, as always, and I'm happy, if you have any questions, to answer them.
Well, thank you, Ms. Jacks, for a wonderful presentation with some very positive news regarding our local residential and commercial economy. We'll start with Commissioner McKinley.
No question, Ms. Jacks. I just want to say thank you. There have been several issues in my district where we've reached out to your office for information, and the level of detail and what you provide us and the timeliness in which you get it to us is much appreciated. You have a wonderful professional team, and you actually make it very easy for people to understand in your presentation. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the good news, too.
Well said. Commissioner McKinley. We'll move now to Commissioner Moreno and Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Thank you. Ms. Jacks, thank you, as always. As a retired real estate broker, these numbers are very important to our residents and our businesses. They, they want to know going forward how they can budget for their taxes in the future. And as a reminder, I know we are going to be talking about our budget in the future, and just so the folks at home know this, if our millage rate stays the same, but the value of your home goes up, you will be paying a little bit more on your taxes. It's not because we raised your taxes, but it's because the value of your home went up. So I always like to remind people of that. And also, you know, I get a lot of your people, they come and knock on my door because your office and my office are on the same floor over in the governmental building. So it's happy, I'm happy to send them over to your office, and I have to say, your staff does a wonderful job. Every time somebody ends up knocking on my door, that's really what they're, they do tell me that, you know, the service in your, your office is wonderful. So thank you.
Very good. And Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Thank you, Mayor, and always good to see you. 1.24%, obviously, that's a tiny amount when you consider, I think, the housing prices, especially in South County, are jumping about 30% over the last six months. I think we've seen the real estate down there red-hot. Are you seeing that throughout the county?
You know, the housing market is, it's so different depending on the place you are at in the, where you're shopping. And I mean that at a, at a price point. You know, there are, there are homes in a sort of 400 to 700,000 or 800,000 range you can't even find. It's almost become that's the affordable section, and that's, that's kind of shocking. But I will point out that there are still a lot of homes, especially condominiums and townhomes, that come in below that, you know, that are in that, below the 400,000 area. Anything over 800,000, we are amazed at what people are, are spending and paying. And it's hard to know exactly what will moderate this. You know, a lot of the transactions that are happening are cash. This is not the same thing that happened during the Great Recession. There is not a lot of, I mean, there is obviously lending taking place. Interest rates are low, but what we're watching is this phenomenon of a lot of cash buying going on. And I think that that may just be people's pent-up desire to do something with their money after a year, year-plus of trying to just sort of sit tight and watch what was happening. I also think it's people just saying, well, you know, we've been through that incredible experience. We don't want to repeat it again, and we need to live life. So they may just be saying, let me buy that bigger house, or that house with a pool, or the house with the, with the golf course in front of it instead. But, you know, our job is to just sort of watch that whole market and make some good decisions that are both conservative in nature, but also true to the real picture, which is a much bigger picture than this 30% on some stuff and maybe nothing near that on others. So.
Well, anecdotally, again, down in South County, we're hearing that the listings are going within a week. They have to be cash offers, and people are overbidding what is being asked. So it's certainly, and I guess we can probably blame this on our neighbors to the north who finally figured out this is the place they want to be.
Well, I think the last summer, they figured it out, that it's okay to be here. We have this thing called air conditioning, and they can survive, right?
Yeah, we figured that one out, how to get humidity out of the house. You know, when I lived up north, I remember every 10 years or so, they would go through the community and do a re-evaluation to equalize the older homes with the newer homes. Is anything like that done here so that people who have been in their homes for, let's say, 30 years are not finding themselves with a, let's say, undervalued home while the new construction is coming in at market rate?
Well, we are annually doing that in Florida. You know, other states have rules about doing a reassessment on a periodic basis. Some do it every 10 years, like you said. Some do it when the commission decides it should be done. But in Florida, we are keeping up with that every year through the market value. So although these folks may be capped because they're homesteaded, if you, their market value continues to move with the larger group of properties. And we're also doing a five-year, we're required to do a physical inspection every five years, and Florida allows you to do that using desktop imagery, which is what we're using now. In, in collaboration with you, we cost-share the aerial photography annually now, which has been a big help to our office and also makes the maps on, on our website and on your website so much better and more current. But we are, so we're regularly keeping track of both improvements people are making and then adjusting the market value as necessary. Now, unless you add an addition, you don't see your capped value go up. Those adjustments are made just to the market level, and then when the property sells, the new owner will pay at that higher market level. But that's what sort of keeps the equalization correct, is that constant review of the market.
And portability is the vehicle for residents who are trying to upgrade but don't want to lose the value that they have between the taxable value and the actual value of their dwelling, so that they're going to be able to carry that savings to their next residence?
They are. And portability wonderfully was expanded last year by the voters in November to three, a three-year window that you can use that benefit from, to move from one home to another homesteaded property anywhere in Florida. So that's been nice because it's kind of made that a little easier for folks who take a break in between the two homes. But yeah, portability is the way that a resident can continue to reap some benefit from the cap, even if they're not in the same home.
Thank you. And just, you know, a point of reference that, you know, this is good news, bad news. Obviously, the good news is values are going up. The bad news is that affordability is going down. And I think that this body knows that we've been talking about workforce housing and affordable housing for people to be able to live here who work here. And we, I guess, as a board, are going to continue to have to, you know, grapple with that problem. And it's a, it's a good problem if you own the real estate. It's not such a good problem if you're trying to buy a home for the first time. But thank you very much.
Well said, Vice Mayor. Thank you, sir. We'll go to Commissioner Bernard and then back to Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Dorothy, we've worked a lot, and so I just want to thank you and your office for always being there whenever we have an issue for our constituents in District 7. Just Commissioner, Vice Mayor Weinroth had mentioned portability. The, my question is, since the voters added the extra year, how do you think that that extra year will impact the dollars that we collect, you know, going forward?
I think it will be a very minimal impact because it was a very specific slice of the portability group that it affects. The majority of people who use portability use it immediately. They move from one home to another home. So they are, their transaction is, is going to happen because they're doing it just from one homestead to another one. All that change did was it allowed that if you decide to sell a home but don't immediately want to buy another home, and that can be for any number of reasons. Sometimes it's, people tell us that they need to go live with their mom because she's not well, and they need to help her for a few years. It allows them a little bit more time at the end to buy another home and still use their benefit. It used to be only two years, and we, and actually, it wasn't a full two years because of the tax roll cycle, and people would miss it. And they would have accrued that benefit, but then it just simply disappeared because they didn't meet a deadline to buy a new home. And so this, it's not a big group of people. I would be surprised if even 100 people in this county benefited from it every year. But those people are entitled to it, and it was just a shame that they weren't able to use it. And three years gives them, seems to give them just enough room, and we're very careful about explaining it to them, too. You know, you need to have bought something new by this date if you want to use your benefit.
And do you think that the public is aware of portability, or can we do more outreach to inform the voters of portability when they're, when they sell their homestead property?
You know, we are, we completely are now habituated that if you are filing for homestead, we ask you where you lived before. It's one of the standard questions. And if you tell us you lived anywhere in Florida, we are having you fill out a portability application, even if you might not have a benefit, because we want to be sure we're able to give it to you. You have to file for homestead on a home in order to have, to get the benefit. So it's really when a transaction happens that's most important. And we, you know, we work hard at talking about it everywhere we can, and we work with the real estate community especially. We're very close to the Realtor Associations. I speak to them very regularly. My staff do as well. And we're explaining over and over how it works because we know it's complex. But, you know, they're our biggest advocates for it, is anybody who is selling real estate is able to say to a buyer, listen, don't forget about filing for homestead and seeing if you have portability.
And lastly, I was on the, on your site this morning. It seems like a couple of years ago, it was harder to determine the portability, but right now, on your website, it's just really easy for you to actually see the portability. So just thanks to your staff for actually making it easier for the public.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Sorry, I should have asked this earlier. You say we have over 600,000 taxable parcels. Now, real estate rule of thumb is, in a community, 10% of those houses turn over every year. Is there a, and I, you may not be able to answer this question, but is there a percentage of transactions occurring that you could give us for the 600K?
Yeah. In fact, it's about 70,000. So it's right, a year.
Oh, it's about, okay.
It's about 70,000 a year. It, it's the last four or five years, it's ranged from about 68,000 to 72,000, depending on the year. And we, we, interestingly, 2020, which we all thought was going to be a very tough year, we only ended up having about six to eight weeks at the, in the beginning of the, in the April-May timeframe when things slowed down, and they caught themselves back up. It ended up being the 2020 total transactions were only 600 less than the 2019 total transaction. And we're talking about a 70,000 figure. So I think this year will, will, will go much higher than that, especially because of this busy first half. We've had month-over-month transaction counts that are, are far exceeding not just 2020, but 2019.
Well, a friend of mine in the industry said to me, when we were talking about real estate, said, most of the people that are coming down here from other places and paying cash, they were always going to come here anyway. But now that they've been working from home and realize they can work from home from anywhere, they might as well do it in paradise. So they're visiting us and staying here now. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for that presentation.
Move to receive and file.
A motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth to receive and file Agenda Item 5A1, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. All in favor? All opposed? We'll just close by saying, you know, one of, one of the duties that, that I share with Vice Mayor Weinroth is to serve on Value Adjustment Board. And I, I want to take this opportunity to thank the professional staff that works under you. You, as their leader and a leader in this county, have found a way to provide personal service to a very large and very diverse county of almost 1.5 million people. And I think the integrity and the efficacy of the value adjustment process speaks volumes of the quality of work that you deliver and your professional staff, and certainly the Clerk and Comptroller's Office and the Value Adjustment Board Division. It's always an honor to work with, with your team, and we're always ultimately very impressed. I always like to say that the, the transfer of residents from the north or from the west, western United States is a product of great local leadership. But in all seriousness, it's a product of a system of governance that is low-tax, high-value, with great weather, with great public services, and a strong community identity. And you certainly play a very important role in that process. So we thank you for your leadership, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Good to be with you.
Very good. That moves us to Agenda Item 5B1 regarding a motion to adopt a resolution relating to the Administrative Code and updating the code. We'll recognize Deputy County Administrator John Van Arnhem for a brief presentation.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. The item before you today is a resolution amending the Palm Beach County Administrative Code. The Administrative Code is required by Chapter 125, Florida statutes and our county charter. The code has to include the rules of procedure adopted by the Board, the organization of our departments and our offices, statements of county policy, and administrative procedures. The charter also requires that the code provide a personnel system that's based on the merit principle and an affirmative action plan. The amendments that you would be approving today change the name of the Department of Housing and Economic Sustainability to the Department of Housing and Economic Development and add the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion that the Board created in the FY21 budget process. They also include updates to various administrative procedures to comply with current county practices as well as Florida statutes. There are no substantive policy changes in the county's merits, rules, our rules of procedure, the Board's rules of procedure, and affirmative action plan are not affected by these amendments. The countywide policies and procedures, or PPMs, that we drive, a lot of what we do, are also incorporated by reference into the code. So this is a long overdue update, and we recommend approval by the Board.
Very good. Thank you, Deputy County Administrator. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Van Arnhem, can you kind of like explain the reason why you're retiring for the second time?
Well, well, that's a, that's a good question, Commissioner. Thanks for asking me. You know, I had a great run here with the Commission, with the Board of County Commissioners, and, you know, the Honitor serves as Verdini's deputy, and, and the time has just come for me to spend some time with my family. And so that's why I'm leaving at this point. Plus the COVID, the pandemic, working, all that kind of tired me out a little bit, but I'm ready for the next chapter in my life, spend some time with my family.
Well, Mr. Van Arnhem, we've had the chance to work together, and, you know, we Well, Mr. Van Arnhem, we've had the chance to work together and, you know, we've, I think we've battled. But I really, really appreciate the work that you've done on behalf of the residents of this county and the full administration. So thank you very much for your dedication to the county.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate, appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move to amend the Palm Beach Code, Administrative Code.
Very good. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth on Agenda Item 5B1, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. All in favor, all opposed. That item passes 6 to 0 with Commissioner Moreno off the dais. And as, I guess this is the last presentation to the Board that you'll be making, sir, as a Deputy County Administrator?
I hope so.
Wait a minute, is this something unfinished that you can come and do back?
I'm sure the County Administrator will have comments, but I want to open it up to the Board for some comments as well. Commissioner McKinley, you recognized, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I thought maybe Ms. Baker would bring this up under her comments, but you opened the door. Mr. Van Arnhem, I, I've been down this road before and said goodbye to you once already. So I just ditto what I said to you in previous comments, but I'm excited for Bebe and for you to have some time, and congratulations. And your daughter, if you don't know, his daughter got a full scholarship ride to Cornell University. It's pretty phenomenal. So that's wonderful for you guys.
That is quite an accomplishment. Good parenting, as my father would say. Commissioner Weiss, you recognized.
Can I finish?
Oh, sorry. I apologize.
That's okay. There has been no bigger champion on issues related to the vulnerable populations of this county than you. From homelessness to at-risk children to feeding the hungry, all the way to our water issues where you got your start. You've been a phenomenal partner, a wonderful mentor. I have the privilege of having worked for you when I worked on the 11th floor. It's been an honor both to work for you and to have, to represent you, and we're going to miss you, and hopefully we'll see you on Todd's back patio with a glass of wine in your hand from time to time. So congratulations to you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Weiss, you recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Van Arnhem, I just, I really want to thank you for your service to, again, to this community. You know, people who, you know, watch what's happening here, they see you, but they don't understand the role that you've played, especially this last year, in really helping to manage a lot of different issues and difficult decisions and things that had to be done. And the way you have, the way you deal with people, the, just, you can tell where you're coming from, the compassion you have for your fellow human beings and citizens. It's been a real pleasure and a real honor to have been able to serve with you, and, but I know that you're looking forward to an opportunity to spend time with your family and wish you all the very, very best. But if you do decide you want to come back, I'm sure there's always a place for you in, in Palm Beach County.
I don't, thank you, Commissioner. I don't know that you could take another retirement. This is, you know, two is fairly enough, so thank you very much, though.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. Vice Mayor Weinroth.
I don't know if there's any truth to the rumor that you were brought back to service when Commissioner Weiss and I showed up on the dais here, and our county administrator took a look at us and said, I need help.
She needed help, that's, that's right.
But it has been certainly a privilege working with you. I missed your first act, but you certainly have been an integral part of the team, especially during the pandemic. I thank you so much for your service, and I wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Ms. Baker, he does still work for you for, for a little while longer, so if you wanted to save your comments for later in the meeting, you're, you're certainly allowed to keep him in this chamber as long as you want. Or if you wanted to do it now, I'll just get my comments out of the way because we want to finish strong with our County Administrator. Well, certainly I've shared a unique perspective and relationship with our Deputy County Administrator, having served as the county mayor during a very difficult time period in the history of this chapter, or the, in chapter of our history. And I have always aspired and always held in high regard professional administrators in large local government, and certainly I can think of, in my personal experience, no finer example of somebody that has to work as a deputy to the County Administrator and help govern an organization of 6,000 people, almost in a county of 1.5 million people. I can imagine the relationship between the County Administrator and his or her deputy is a very special one. It's not one that I can comment on, but as a liaison from the legislative branch, that being the Board, to the executive branch being the County Administration, one of the highlights of my time in this seat has been working directly with you and your boss, Ms. Baker. We had a conversation recently in your office regarding us landing an airplane of COVID-19 here in our beautiful community, and the comment was made about how this is such an appropriate moment in time for you to close your professional book. It's been a long, interesting, and certainly very successful book with many chapters, but to have watched you execute on behalf of the Board, to watch you execute during the COVID-19 on behalf of the incident commander, just having that perspective and that participation has been an honor of my lifetime, and it's been an honor to work with you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Administrator, she can't do it. She's crying, I think. I don't know. So...
I'm back. I'm back.
Did you want to be recognized now, Madam Administrator?
If all the Commissioners are done.
I don't see any lights.
I, I can't say any more than what you have. I've worked with John for a very, very long time. We've gotten a lot of projects done. We, we're like husband and wife work partners. You know, his family has become my family, my family, his family. He's just an awesome teammate. He is the person you want next to you when you're going to battle. I can tell you that. He's going to be a straight shooter with you. He's going to argue his point, and once a decision is made, he's the guy that pushes that boulder up the hill for you. And you could not ask for a better partner. He's the guy that you can turn your back on and not worry about what's going on behind your back. He is there, and he has been that way even before I became the County Administrator, working as a Deputy County Administrator and him as an assistant. Also, him working in ERM when I was the Deputy County Administrator. Whenever we had challenges, we were able to work those through. John, I will definitely miss you from work. I will not miss you socially. Hopefully, we'll see each other more socially than we have in the past because we've spent so much time at work. He's the guy that you know is really thinking, even though he's quiet, when he starts rubbing that head, you got a problem. So I won't tell any more secrets. But I do want to thank you for your dedication to not only me personally, my family, but also residents of this county. You have been a stalwart as far as arguing the points, making sure that all parties are included in our county, and I, I will miss you dearly. But you will be working up until your last second, walking out the door on Friday. So I do want, and I did not, you gave me strict instructions not to do anything for you. Of course, I halfway listened to you. So I would like to present to you a collage of these last two years. I think God sent you to me to help us through these last two years because, trust me, 20 was a challenge. And also to provide you with a few tokens that we didn't give you the last time that hopefully will constantly remind you of Palm Beach County, and you can come back anytime you want.
You're all too kind. Thank you very much.
Swag.
Swag. Good swag.
Let's go photo bomb. Come on. We're going to photo bomb.
Okay.
Hello, over here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you want to do it up here?
We're going to do it up there.
Okay.
First auto body.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah. Simple.
You get in the middle. Come on.
No, I got that in the office.
Life of tears.
No tears.
Big smile in two years.
Yeah, he's smiling more than I've ever seen. Really.
Well, one thing the Deputy County Administrator knows very well is that while people come and go, the business as government will always continue forward, so we were going to move further into our agenda because we are delighted to have our beloved Supervisor of Elections, Wendy Link, and some of her staff for Agenda Item 5B1. No, 5B2, I apologize. We're delighted to have you to come present to one new precinct creation.
We're going to birth a precinct.
Madam Supervisor, you're recognized on 5B2.
So thank you, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. You know, 5B2 is typically an item you'd see on our consent agenda, and these are just updates that we do periodically to our precincts. However, the Supervisor of Elections and I had some conversations with the County Administrator. She had a few other additional updates and some recognitions that she wanted to share specifically in the areas of cybersecurity and also related to some of the most recent dealings in Tallahassee. And we thought this might be an appropriate time for her to, to share some of that and engage in some questions and answers with you. So if, if you'd like, we can move the item now, and then we can get into some of the presentation and some of the other questions, too. I know there's also some questions related to precincts as well that in her presentation the Supervisor is going to address from some of the Commissioner comments.
Very good. Commissioner Moreno, you recognized.
Well, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno to move forward Agenda Item 5B2, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. There's no public comment. All in favor, all opposed. That item passes 7 to 0, and we're delighted to have you here today and with the comments and updates and recognitions as well. Ma'am?
Thank you so very much for allowing us to be here. I'd like to take this opportunity to, we are going to have a small, short presentation because we did, we were very fortunate. We won this year because of all of the support that the county, both the Commission, the Todd, Verdina, you know, even our, you know, our county attorney has always provided us, you know, great, great advice, and we've been able to move forward in a way that we haven't been recognized here before. So the Election Assistance Commission gives out awards after elections, and, and following the 2020 election, Palm Beach County was awarded by the EAC an award for our innovation in cybersecurity, particularly as it relates to our physical security with cybersecurity. And so we wanted to share that award with you. I'm wearing one of our pins that we'll be providing, and I have here at the podium, we have our IT Director George Nunez and IT Director Ed Cesario, Louis Moreno, and William Montoya here with our IT Department. We also have Kim Rayner, Ashley Houlihan, Kate Bixby, and Sean Williams are here from our office. And so this is a very exciting time for us. As you know, we work very closely up until now, and we'll talk about that in a moment, we've been able to be part of the county's IT system. So we've been behind your firewalls. We've had our own, but we've been, we've had to work very closely with your IT, and so we've asked Archie to be here as well. And I'm going to turn this over now to our IT Director George Nunez.
Thank you, Supervisor Link. Good morning, Commissioners. Where is Mr. Satchel?
From one IT team to you and your team, we want to thank you for all the assistance and all the resources that you provided to us in 2020 elections. Without you guys, without your help, we wouldn't have been able to deliver what we needed to deliver to the voters of Palm Beach. And most importantly, you probably wouldn't have gotten part of that award, which we want to share with you and your team, and thank you for that.
Thank you. On behalf of my team, all the hard workers in ISS, that's what we do. We support all the electeds, all the Constitutional and the county departments, and, you know, it's, it's good to have a partnership with the Supervisor of Elections that we can always ensure that Palm Beach County is safe where it comes down to cybersecurity. It's a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So what we have for you that you'll be seeing, these are just the pins that we have recognizing our award from the ESS. We did receive honorable mention nationally in this category, in the cybersecurity category. Five, five Supervisor of Elections offices nationally were recognized. We were one of them, and we did receive honorable mention. So it was very exciting, and so I want to thank you for the support that you've given us because that's what's allowed us to put the things in place that are necessary to do this. And so wanted to share that with you. And then we did send, with Archie, he won for each of his team members as well, so. So that was our, our very good, exciting part. So thank you for allowing us to share that with you, and again, thank you for your support in that. I did, I was told that during, I guess, your briefing, there were some questions, one regarding the redistricting. And of course, as you know, we haven't gotten the information yet. This is because of COVID and whatnot, things are behind. But once we get the information from you, from the state, from everybody, then we'll overlay and overlap, and we'll be able to tell where, you know, where those lines have been drawn, which, so how that then relates to which precincts we'll need to have. We'll then look at each of those areas, and sometimes because one overlaps this way, one overlaps this way, you end up with some very small precincts. But then we also may have some that are very large. And so then we'll need to make that determination, given the, where we're going with vote by mail, and is that going to continue? Are we able to have more people in a precinct because the precincts will likely be able to handle it because we have more people using vote by mail than we have in the past? Or is that going to change now that COVID's over? So we'll be looking at those things and trying to make those determinations as soon as we get that information from you. So we'll look forward to doing that, but it's a little bit up in the air. So Commissioner Moreno, did you have a specific question about the precincts, or?
No, actually, it was explained well enough to me during our agenda review yesterday. And, but I do have another question, but finish your presentation. No, no, please, go ahead. Well, I know that adopt a precinct is something that you all do. Could you please explain that to us so that maybe we can encourage others to do so?
Absolutely. Adopt a precinct is a win-win for our office and for organizations in our county. We are, as you know, and you've heard me beg before, we're always looking for new qualified poll workers. And an adopt a precinct is an opportunity for an organization who's trying to raise money for their organization, or for a group that's going to raise money on behalf of an organization, to say, we will bring in our volunteers, and we are going to staff your location for you. Sometimes it's one precinct, sometimes it's multiple precincts. And they are under all the same obligations as any other location we would staff in terms of diversity, party diversity, whether or not we need a Hispanic speaker and that, and all the training. So we'll do all that training, but they're bringing us basically new volunteers, and those folks will volunteer on behalf of that organization. They sign something with us that says, the money that you would have paid me, please pay that instead to this organization. And so it's an opportunity for an organization to use their volunteers who are looking for ways to give back, gives us great new poll workers, and gives the organization an opportunity to raise money. So we pay them what we would have paid our poll workers.
And going back to the new precinct, please explain why we are getting one new precinct?
Because we, it was an area that was a zero area, and people have moved into it.
I see, yeah, I read that in there. So how often does that happen?
It, periodically, I mean, it's not terribly often. I mean, we probably have a five or six a year on your, they will always come before you. They're usually on your consent agenda, but it's, it's not, it's not constant, but yes, it will happen.
And just for those watching, a new precinct doesn't necessarily mean a new poll location. And just for those watching, a new precinct doesn't necessarily mean a new poll location.
Not necessarily, no, because we have some precincts that are zero precincts. We have a couple of precincts right now that have one voter in them.
Yeah, we've got a couple of those.
Yeah. So obviously, we're not going to open up a location just for that. So we will pool them that are together. They need to generally be beside each other. So as long as they're adjacent, we can pull them together. And as long as the polling location can handle it.
Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Weinroth, you're recognized.
Thank you. Madam Supervisor, it's great to see you. I know when you were appointed to this position, you were given one charge by the Governor, keep us out of the headlines.
Right.
And I think you accomplished that very well.
Excited to say that we were out of the headlines.
We, you know, certainly your efficiency and tabulation, the transparency of your operation was something that I'm sure the rest of the country was watching. And we are proud to be a part of Palm Beach County because, again, this year, we were not in the headlines. There were other states that got ahead of us, and thank you so much. I wanted to ask you two questions, especially since after this last legislative session has been some tinkering with the election laws.
Yes.
Specifically with vote by mail as to how people are going to have to re-register for vote by mail, and also how they're going to be able to deposit their ballots during the next election. I know we're coming up on a special election for Congressman Hastings' vacant seat now. Can you tell us a little bit about if people need to re-register for vote by mail earlier than the original cycle for the special election? And then what are they going to find when they're trying to deposit their ballots at the polling places?
Sure. So we were very fortunate that we were able to make some changes to the earlier versions of the bill. And so we will not have the situation where everybody was removed from the vote by mail requests. And so if you had a request in by May 6, then you, and you had requests for all future elections, it will maintain validity now through the election, November election in 2022. So after that, now, there were people who, at the time they registered, they registered through 2024. That will not take place. So they will have to register again after 2022. One of the challenges will be that in the past, one of the things we did, and it's, not every county did it, but Palm Beach County we did, we had a checkbox on the vote by mail return envelope that somebody could just, since they're signing it, they could check saying they'd like to continue their vote by mail. We're not going to be able to do that now. That's part of this new bill. And it will require additional information. So we will need to have either the driver's license or the last four digits of their social security number to do a number of things, including vote by mail requests.
So is that a new application will have to be filed for everybody after '22?
Right. Yes. So everybody will have to do that. And the challenge will be, it's whichever is verifiable by us. So a lot of people won't recall, when they registered, did they give their driver's license number or their social security number? So if they then make a request, and they provide us with one, but it's not the one that we have, then we can't verify it. So it results in a lot of things that are incomplete, which results in a lot more, a lot more work, quite honestly, just trying to get, we'll have to mail, send out mail links to them, letting them know it's incomplete, try to get them to send it back to us. We might be able to use some of the DMV information, but that's, of course, another step, and will require more staff to be able to get into DMVs things. So we might be able to check some driver's licenses that way. So we're looking at, how can we do it the most efficiently with the additional things that are going to come on? We also ran a query, and we have approximately 60,000, I'll check with that, yeah, it's about 60,000 voters because of the time they, at the time they registered, they weren't required to have one or the other. And so we have about 60,000 voters on the rolls that we have neither social security number or driver's license. So we'll be needing to reach out to them as well to get that information.
And that's prior to '22, or that's going to be after '22?
That's going, no, we'll be doing that. We're starting to get that in play now. We're waiting, we haven't done all of the work right yet because there's a couple of things going on. There is, there has been lawsuits filed. So we don't want to do anything prematurely. We want to wait to see how those lawsuits settle out. Also, there's rulemaking. The state, typically, when the elections laws change, they are effective June 30, July 1. And so there's time for the state to make their rulemaking and for us to get that information. And that didn't occur this time. It became effective upon signing. But we still, the state still hasn't done the rulemaking. So we're, everybody's guessing a little bit as to what it'll look like. But we, you know, we've looked at the statutes. We've created new vote by mail request forms that comply with the statutes, and we're getting those out. We have a fillable PDF on our website because the state hasn't yet, the vendor who represents everybody in the state hasn't been able to get that fixed yet on the website. They believed they had until July 1. And so we, there's a little thing, some things that we're just behind on that we have to wait until the vendors can catch up.
And voters in the 20th Congressional District, they will be able to still use the vote by mail that's on record right now?
They will be, yes. If they, if they, so long as they had requested, you know, future elections.
Okay. And then as far as the vote by mail boxes, you're not going to have the same flexibility you had in the last election?
Correct. So we, we were able to really work with the legislature, and we did get a lot of things changed. Initially, it started off that there would be no vote by mail drop boxes at all. We, and I was actually the co-chair of that committee, and to get them back. So we do now have them at all of our early voting sites again. The difference is that they'll be inside the early voting sites. They will have to be attended to by two of our employees. And if there's ever a time that they're not properly attended to, then it's actually a $25,000 per occurrence personal fine to me. So I can assure you, we'll have at least two that, you know, there. So that's, I'm very unfortunate that the legislature went that way. So we'll have to have two of those. And the vans that you saw that we had that were not mobile, but were out there to, at each site, that gave everybody an opportunity to drop. And we had over 100,000 ballots that were put in those vans. So it really did help to keep those lines shorter, to also keep people who had very strong feelings, you know, about candidates, to maybe keep them a little farther apart from each other. And that was funded by a third party, and we're no longer allowed to keep that funding either. So there are some rules and things that will change. So we will still have ballots at early, or drop boxes at early voting, but it will just be during early voting hours and inside the early voting location.
Will you be able to have someone at the main post office collecting ballots up until 7:00 PM?
Well, the post office will collect them. We do do a sweep right about quarter to seven to make sure that we have everything. The post office, they take pictures to show that it's empty and that they've gotten everything. We also, we'll be able to have our drop boxes at our office, but only when they are, again, attended to by our employees. So we will not be able to have the 24/7 that we were able to have in the past before, so long as we had the video surveillance, which we do now. And as long as we had law enforcement watching it over the night, it could stay open because you never know who's going to be, want to come at what time. But we're not able to do that now. It can only be when we can staff it with our employees.
Very good. Thank you, and congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Mayor. It's such a pleasure to see you again, Supervisor, and thank you for all you've done for us. And congratulations on this award. It makes us all proud because we're all elected officials, and we really, really rely on the integrity of our, of our process. I have been through a tour of your place, and I encourage all of my colleagues to do the same because it is an amazing factory of just well-kept processes that you have there. And I think I was, I walked away much more impressed than I was before. So thank you for all you do. And I encourage everybody here to take a tour of your main office. It's impressive. Thank you.
You're all welcome anytime.
Well, be careful, Commissioner Sacks. You may find yourself on the canvassing board. And I think our current appointee on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners is Commissioner Greg Weiss.
Yes, it's good to keep him there. I think he's doing a great job.
He's done a heck of a job. We'll have to.
We appreciate his incredibly long hours. It's, it was, for 2020, it was, it was quite the challenge. And, and we don't know, I mean, what some of the new, what the changes are going to be. Duplication of ballots will be very different this time. Will require more people probably, also more space opportunities. It's always been done in the public, and we've always indicated when that will be. But I think there could be some different rules related to that. There'll be a number of different rules that, just even the changes that they made, are going to require us to change every, almost every piece of paper we have in the office now. So all of our ballot envelopes, what we send out, what we get back, those are, because wording changes and they're printed. Our provisional envelopes all have to change, provisional, there are affirmation certificates, the inside secrecy sleeves have to change. So everywhere, when they make these changes, even though it doesn't seem like a lot, maybe to them, it's a word or a two, but it changes everything that we're doing. Obviously, all of our vote by mail request forms, we'll be having new registration forms that are coming out. So there are changes, and it's going to result in really almost every single piece of paper we have being recycled and started, started anew. So you'll see a lot of, a lot of changes that way, that they come as a result of this. And as we mentioned, there are a lot of things that we were able to have volunteers do in the past. And we had a lot of people, we have a lot of very civic-minded people who want to just volunteer and be there to help. And so we actually had a whole volunteer, we created a volunteer section that we could go out and do that because it brings people in. We, our thought is, the more transparency, the better. So we're able to show more members of the public what it is we do, how we do it. And then obviously, we're getting labor that we're not paying for when they're choosing to volunteer. We're no longer allowed to have that under SB 90. So it's going to result in a number of changes that way. So we're, there's a lot of things that are going to come, come from this, that we're waiting for some of it to be clarified during rulemaking. But it's very unfortunate, some of the things that are going to change will, will result in, I think, a lot more expense to the counties across the state.
Well, despite the differing perspectives and views on the legislation, we do have the full faith and confidence that if there's any elected leader that can manage this process, it would be you. Vice Mayor Weinroth mentioned your gubernatorial appointment as our supervisor. And then Commissioner Sacks mentioned, it's great to see you again, which I believe is a reference to your overwhelming election to this office. And so you hold a unique distinction in this county to have been appointed by the Governor and to be overwhelmingly elected to the same office in the same time. So we're very proud of you and the work that you and your staff do. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Thank you. I think it should be noted that the Florida Supervisor of Elections Association adamantly opposed this legislation. So it certainly, you know, our comments and our opposition to this legislation coming from a rather Democratic county certainly should not be misconstrued, that this is some sort of partisan opposition. This was widely opposed statewide by all the supervisors. So Ms. Link, the, our Supervisor Link, the estimated fiscal impact of this legislation to your office, have you run those numbers yet?
We're in the process of doing that, separating out what's related to that. We also have at the same time, of course, we've got the redistricting that occurs once every 10 years, so that's all in it, as well as there's a memorandum of agreement that we've been required to sign with the state. All, all counties did. But because, as was earlier stated, Palm Beach County has such a robust and very good IT program here, the Supervisor of Elections has enjoyed the ability to be behind that and to have that firewall. And then anything we did was in addition to that. But, you know, the base was already there, and so there was not required to be a lot of duplication of efforts. Under the MOA, we actually are now required to pull apart from the county. So that's a huge expense, as you can imagine. Everything your IT department does for us, we now have to independently do. And we have until, by, by the MOA, we have until the end of December to accomplish that. But it also has to be done before our next election, which really gives us only until about August to get all of that in place. So there's, it's, it's hard to say what of that, of our expenses are going to be related to SB 90, and what are related to the MOA, and what are related to redistricting. So I can get that information for you, but right now, we don't have it.
But it's fair to say, between having to now no longer utilize volunteers, having to change all of your forms, having to staff full-time around the clock, the drop boxes, and make these IT changes, that there will be fiscal impact to your office.
Yes, yes, there will be.
And then Todd, I mean, aren't we required under the Florida Constitution that any time legislation is passed, that includes an unfunded mandate? That's supposed to pass the legislature by two-thirds vote?
Yeah, that is one of the requirements that they, that they have in sort of the intent of that legislation to, you know, put forward some of the unfunded mandate bills. So it's clear to the legislature, and it's clear to bodies that may be the beneficiaries of those unfunded mandates to, to make that clear during the legislative process. And I'm not aware if in the course of this particular bill, what language was in there regarding that particular mandate question.
And I think there will be some that will argue, for example, that we are not required to have the drop boxes. So the expenses that we will incur to have the drop boxes, there is no requirement other than the early voting sites, which is just adding two poll workers to each of those. But having them at our main office, I don't believe it's required that we do that or at any of our offices. So I think you, we may end up with the, the distinction of, well, that's a choice that your county is making. Just like it's a choice that our county has Sunday early voting, the last Sunday. So there are some things that, that are going to be expenses, but they are not necessarily mandated by the law, but it's what we do.
I think we could use some more constitutional scholars in the legislature. The driver's license and the social security number issue and the 60,000 voters that you referenced, is there a way that they, people, we can tell the public, is there somewhere they can go online to check what information is on file and verify for themselves without your team having to do that?
They can, no, they can call, they can call us, and we can, if they want to update anything. For example, if they're calling now to, if they do call to do a vote by mail, then we obviously can look, and we know what information we have. So we can ask them to verify that particular information. The challenge comes in when somebody sends us something in writing, and they would give us one or the other, perhaps using our new form, but it's not the one that we have on file for them. So it's no longer, so it's not verifiable. That's, I think, where the challenge is going to come in. And then obviously, for the ones that have nothing. But will be, there's a lot of things that are now required that you have to use the voter registration forms to do, that you used to be able to just send us an email to do a few things, or sign something. You could take a picture of a written note, email it to us, and as long as we had your signature, we were okay. Some of those things will now require that you use a voter registration form, which is obviously more cumbersome. But, but we're, we're working on getting that word out, and working with the groups to make sure we can get those out to enough people.
I'm looking at the gentleman sitting next to you, and know that he oversees the Public Affairs Department and does a television show called Politically Speaking. Two really good opportunities to get the word out proactively to try to lessen the load on your team. And then my last question would be, did the legislation also include a requirement for photo IDs?
We've had the same, we've had a requirement for photo ID. I don't think, let me just, my legal counsel's here. Was there any change? No, I don't think there was a change to the requirement for photo ID. We've had requirement for photo ID in order to cast the ballot. If you don't have photo ID, you can cast a ballot, but it's a provisional ballot. And then they follows under the provisional ballot statute that goes before the canvassing board, where they are verifying certain things from the canvassing board's perspective, to be able to accept the ballot from somebody who doesn't have photo ID.
Okay. There was. I was telling Todd yesterday, and I can't remember what state it is, but they have an elections identification certificate that they can get. It's a free photo ID that they can get through the DMV in that state. I'll see if I can find the information and get it to you. Because requiring either a state ID or a driver's license, those documents are not free. So people actually have to pay for those. This was something that was provided for free, and I'll get that info to you.
Oh, that would be, it would likely require a legislative change because it's legislatively set out what we're allowed to accept.
Okay.
But we, but we may be able to, to figure out a way to incorporate that in. It would be, it'd be awesome.
Okay. And I probably just made Aunt Gan and cringe, but we'll get to you that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. And I've noted that the County Administrator stepped off the dais. So if there's any special requests you have that you want to bring forward now, it'd be the time to do it.
Perfect. Let me go, I have my list.
Your motion, no, just kidding. Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized.
Thank you. And thank you, Supervisor Link, for being here today. You know, it's, when we were going through the election, I was able to share, the 2020 election, I was able to share with my colleagues, you know, just the phenomenal job that you and your staff do for our citizens in making sure that not only they have an opportunity to cast their ballots, but that their votes get counted accurately and efficiently. And you guys have done an outstanding job, outstanding.
Thank you.
It's disappointing to see, you know, some of the legislation that came out this last time regarding elections. I, you know, but I can assure the public that your votes in Palm Beach County are accurate. in Palm Beach County are accurately counted. Only those people that are allowed to vote are, votes are counted and you, you guys do that. I think, you know, concerns that I have is that not only is it going to cost more now because of these changes, but also the concern it might take longer to do some of these operations and that they didn't provide for additional time or additional personnel to accomplish that.
Right.
And, you know, that is going to come to bear. You know, when you're in a small county with, you know, 10,000 people, there's a big difference than when you're in a county with almost a million and a half people.
Right.
And at the scale and the complexities of what you all do, you know, is very different. And for, unfortunately, for the state legislature to take a one size fits all approach is really at this point in time, you know, not appropriate. You need to really look. And I would invite, you know, any of them to come down to an election here in Palm Beach County to see how it's done and to see the challenges.
We invited them all. We'll continue to invite them. But yes, I agree with you.
I mean, if you've seen it in person and understand it, then I think, you know, you make much better and informed decisions. And it's clear, you know, that there, there wasn't that distinction. So hopefully, maybe in this next legislative session, that's something that we can help, you know, with Todd, with Todd's teams, you know, help and assistance, maybe get some of those things addressed so that it does reflect the differences that we all have. I mean, we're one state, but they're very different communities and complexities of what has to be done. So.
Right. And I think it is important, as Commissioner McKinley had mentioned, that this is not a partisan complaint in any way, because we do have different sizes of counties, big, small, rural, urban, that have different needs and different issues that they need to focus on. It's very rare that 67 supervisors will agree on anything, just because what fits, you know, our county may not really work for Martin County, for, you know, even right next door. But to have 67 supervisors opposing this and including, obviously, many of them being Republican and some of our former legislators, who were considered the very conservative Republican legislators. So I think that's very important for people to understand that this was really about not the ability of the legislature to do their job. We respect that. We respect that they create the laws and that we implement them. We have total respect for that process. I think the concern was the processes that they brought into place without really understanding the effect that that has was the concern that was raised.
Yeah. Well, I think you all did a, you did a really good job in trying to explain, trying to explain that. But I think there's nothing can take the place of actually seeing it when you see, you know, the tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of ballots coming in and having to be handled and, and dealt with versus somebody who's dealing with a thousand.
Right.
I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it's just at a very different scale. So.
It is. Well, and you saw it. You saw, you saw how much time we spend doing the, looking at duplicated ballots and things like that to make sure that they're accurate. And so, yes, you've lived it. We appreciate that.
Well, and it was, it's, it's open, it's a process that's always been open to the public as well, to observe it as well. So there was no, you know, there's nothing, you know, untoward or anything that, you know, that I saw. And trust me, if I had seen it, you would have heard about it. And so would the rest of the public people of Palm Beach County as well. But it, it was just done very, very well, effectively, efficiently. And so to that, I just wanted to.
I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. I will close agenda item 5B2. Just one final question for the supervisor. Did you have a written report that you wanted the board to receive and file? Or was it just the item on the pre seat that needed to be?
Just the item, just that item, yes, sir.
Very good. We have been delighted to have you and your staff here today. We are very well aware of the integrity of the elections process in Palm Beach County. And we thank you and your staff for your leadership.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I'll take appoint a person privilege at this time to recognize our county attorney.
I appreciate the professional courtesy to allow me to do my comments now. In addition to saying that I'll miss Java very much, I'm glad, it's like almost on cue, he walked back in. And then we'll get our photo with glasses of wine. But I want, I have a very exciting announcement to make, an introduction, actually. We have our summer intern here who's been patiently watching government in action. Since 2007, since 2017, the county attorney's office has participated in the Palm Beach County Bar Association's Diversity Internship Program. And thanks to Helene Viz, who has been the leader on this since the inception, and Liz Herman, who now is working with her on the selection process. We also in the office, just as a side note, Ms. Simba Matumba, he is a past co-chair of this program and are another litigator that we have now, Toni Ann Brown, she is the current co-chair. So we're very active in this program. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to Noel Cabral. She just wrapped up her first year at Nova University and she just found out that she aced her con law class, which I know will excite the mayor, and real property class. And she's already jumped in and has done extraordinary legal analysis that we're very impressed. One week later, and we just, it's outstanding. She's also a member of her, the human rights organization. She's the representative. She's, she's active in school and she has a young son that she's raising. So she's an extraordinary woman, a young lady and very happy that you're with us. And one other thing I saw on your resume I found interesting, she also was an assistant manager at the King's Academy daycare. So she has plenty of training with teaching the kids' school, managing the day to day operations. So I think all that's going to prepare you for a really good, you know, legal practice. Not everyone's blessed with great clients like I have. So you might need that daycare skillset to navigate client waters. But welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. And that is awesome. And I'm going to lean on the Socratic method for a moment and invite you to make some comments to the members of the board, but not before we give you a round of applause for your diligence and your achievements. If you have any comments you'd like to make, you can. If not, you can certainly wave us off. But I will tell you that obtaining an A in constitutional law is an incredible achievement. They, they curve in law school in a very rigid bell curve. And, and to separate yourself, I never had, well, I had the opportunity, I never took that opportunity to separate myself and obtain an A in any class except contracts. So that's an incredible achievement and we're very proud to have you working for, or working with us here at the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized if you had a comment.
I know, I was just going to say, based on our last conversation, perhaps we should send her to Tallahassee.
Well, can you give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down on your experience here so far? Very good. Well said. Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you for allowing. Noel has to go jump on a mandatory meeting on Zoom at noon. So I appreciate the courtesy.
Absolutely. We're delighted to have you here with us today. That'll bring us now to agenda item 5C1, Engineering and Public Works Regarding the Five Year Program. Mr. Ricks, you're recognized, sir, for a brief presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Member of the County Commissioner, Administrator Baker. With me, basically, County Administrator, Assistant County Administrator Patrick Ritter, the Director of Road Route Production, Morton Rose, and also with the County Attorney's Office, Liz Herman, as part of my team. So before we get started, I'm just going to read just a couple of few, few items and I'll go through the presentation and then open up for comments. Palm Beach County Code, Chapter 23, Article 1, Section 23-1, Five Year Road Program Ordinance as amended provides for the road program. And part of this ordinance, Section E, provides from time to time during each year, the Board of County Commissioners by resolution may shift funding within the program to promote a more efficient construction of the road projects. There are no deletions, substitution, or additions of entire construction project Exhibit A. Therefore, neither public hearing nor amendment to the ordinance is required. The annual update for the fiscal year 21 through fiscal year 25 was approved by the Board of County Commissioners, December 22, 2020. So now, let me go through the program just real briefly. So as you were members of Board of County Commissioners, this is set by an ordinance 85-40, and the funding sources, impact fees, proportion share, gas tax, infrastructure sales tax, and DOT agreements. And to give you a perspective, a year ago at this time, looking at the mid-year adjustment, you know, for FY20, FY24, we looked at $27 million in terms of the annual program being adjusted. And then December 2020, we did our new year update, adding one year, one year drop off, so 21 through 25, and total program year, $27 million and $300,000. And for this board, for your consideration, based upon revised numbers in terms of estimates, our new program year in terms of adjustments is $295 million, $390,000. And so this is a major adjustment for the program, as I said earlier. Well, I'd like to briefly go through by districts in terms of just the adjustments in the program. So for District 1, for Center Street, in FY25, we're basically revising, you know, the construction cost of $2 million. Center Street, Intana Church Road, we're basically adjusting basically the scope of the project. On Church Street, we added, you know, that phase of construction, $2 million in '23. And North Lake revised the construction for $6.9 million. So District 2, and Benoit's Farm, we are slipping the construction from FY21, '22 a little bit. For Florida Mangle, same thing, is slipping to FY22. Gun Club Road, we added, you know, the, the right of way phase. And Oka Chobe Boulevard, the Heather Hill intersection improvement, it's been delayed to FY22. So for District 3, Sixth Avenue, revised the construction number, $11 million for FY21. Tenth Avenue, FY22, 1.4 million. Fullham Angle, 6.1 million. And Fullham Angle Road, the construction is delayed from FY21 to '22. District 4, we've added a, a design right of way phase and jog road program. And Panama Park Road revised the construction number in FY22 to $2 million. For District 5, Boca Road, which is an FY25, construction phase $2 million. Lyons Road, several Lyons Road projects, one in '25, $3 million for the construction phase FY25. And then another Lyons Road project, FY23, $7 million for the construction phase. And then Sims Road, we revised the scope of work. But also related to this project, the last one is Yamato Road, we are going to be, that's a widening project. We're going to be looking at guard rail installation for segments of that project where warrant, where we can, where it's reasonable. But we'll take a look at that and feed that back conversation with the district commissioner on that project. Next, District 6, Sixtieth Street, we added the, the FY22 for a revised, the design and right of way phase, $500,000. On Sixtieth Street North, another phase, another phase of that project, construction phase FY23. The Coconut Boulevard, the construction in terms of revised number, $3.3 million. We'll be having more conversations in Intana Improvement District. They put together a tremendous mobility plan, you know, basic district wide for the district. And we're going to see what elements of that mobility plan can be added to, to this, to this project. North Lake, we've added revised construction figure, $6.9 million. Royal Pond Boulevard, two segments of that, one phase, $3 million in terms of construction for FY25. And then another segment, we're doing a right of way phase, $700,000 in terms of revised number. Hold on a second. FY, I'm sorry, clicking, I'm sorry. Make sure my screen is keeping up with me. There we go. Sorry about that. For District 7, on 45th Street, the construction phase is going from '21 to '22. Oka Chobe Boulevard, slipping to '22 on that. And then Willbight, revised construction number, $1.3 million. To summarize in terms of the earlier construction slips, you can see that 45th Street and Oka Chobe Boulevard, Benoit's Farm, Fullham Angle, these are going to be delayed to FY22. And then Sixtieth Street, that is going to be pushed back to '23. But looking at our projects that we, to expect accomplished in this fiscal year, we've got 13 projects that are scheduled to, for a construction award this fiscal year, total about $42 million that, for board consideration. And then we also have a project that we had bid protest for about a year and the protest process has completed. And right now, we're working with the second low bidder to hopefully he can hold his price and so we can get that project awarded and make a recommendation for board consideration. Also related to just road projects, we also do, you know, sales tax and basic resurfacing. For FY20, we did 45 projects and you can see this complete list of about $12 million. And then for FY21, in dark is, is basically the projects we've completed, '22. And then in lighter color, '26 are pending. So we've got almost 19, 18.6 million dollars of worth of resurfacing and sales tax projects that we've got scheduled for the fiscal year. So in addition to just building roads and resurfacing, we also do, you know, other infrastructure in terms of stormwater with the board, the support and the county administration support. We have revamped our stormwater operations in the past three years from five people to 15. We've got some additional vehicles. And we actually have a GS mapping service in terms of documenting all of our maintenance as we do on a regular basis. And then related to that, you know, we're starting to look at basically our drainage challenges. And so we've been spending about $8 million over the past five years in terms of drainage projects. We've got some more pending. And so we're looking to, to put together a more complete list in terms of drainage needs, you know, countywide. And also, we're working with the Office of Community Revitalization, Houston Tate, to look at some of his underserved areas and to do some assessments so he can seek some federal funding for those challenging areas. And then last, we also are doing a comprehensive stormwater master plan, mapping process. We've got a contract that was approved by the board this past spring. And we're expected to probably bring a, an update to the board in terms of a stormwater mapping overall strategy later this, this calendar year. And then last but last least, in terms of public outreach, what we want to do is also tell the public in terms of what we're doing with stormwater, stormwater things. And so, click it. There you go. Stormwater. And so we're going to be wrapping some of our vehicles to tell the community that we are doing some positive things. We need their help to kind of keep the community clean. I'd like to open up for questions. Thank you.
All right. Well, it's very appropriate that the imaging on the van included the lighthouse because we're going to start with Commissioner Moreno.
All right. This is just a quick question or maybe an explanation on page, on the page where you have the District 1 breakout of projects, where you show North Lake Boulevard, east of Hall for $6,900,000. You show it again on the District 6 page for the same 600, $6,900. Now, the total at the end, I know, I might, I might sound like I'm confused. I'm not. The total number that you give at the end says six, says, actually, it said estimated $700, $7 million. But why do you count it twice? Why don't you divide it in half and put one in District 1 and one in District 6? So with your spread, with, with this spreadsheet, it says 6.9 and it says District 1 and 6. And when you go to the page that's District 6, it also says 6.9. But in your totals on the bottom, it looks like you're double counting on these individual pages, but you're only single counting at the end. So what's the real price?
Well, it is, which opens, press again, press again. There you go. Oh, I'm sorry. It is, it is 6.9. But because it occurs in, the project expands over both districts, both commission districts. So I think that's your.
No, I understand that. I understand. It's, and this, this happens in other charts. On, on every single district, it shows whatever two projects there are. I'm just saying, it looks like it's double counted in one place and single counted in another. Cause you, you put a total at the bottom for $8.9 million, including the 6.9. But then you also total District 6 and add the 6.9 million to that total. So it looks like it's being counted twice in one place, but counted once in another.
Okay. I'd, I'd have to take a look at that to see.
And, and it's, and it's every other project that takes place in, in multiple districts, that it looks like it's counted, when you do your columns and your additions, it looks like it's counted here.
Right.
But at the end, it's only counted once. But if you were to total all of your totals, it would be counted twice.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. The, the intent was not to count it twice. So that, it is 6.9.
Correct. For that particular project.
For that particular project. For that particular project.
It needs to be, and I realize it needs to be allocated between both districts. In the future, maybe it's divided in half and put half total in one district and half total in the other.
I understand what you're saying.
Because if you were to add these totals up, they wouldn't, they wouldn't drive.
It would be over. Right, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Sacks, you recognize, and then we'll go to Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you so much. And I want to thank you and recognize you, Mr. Ricks, for always being very assessable to me in my office, to go over these numbers and to go over the projects. And looking at District Five, and you and I had a discussion, in fact, we've had a number of discussions leading up to today, with regard to the very last project, which is Lake Ridge Boulevard to west of Florida's Turnpike on Yamato Road. And I just, I want to be sure that it is stated on the record that we have a commitment from your office and my office, that at some point, there will be an approved barrier. It could be whatever is approved by the FDOT in your office, some type of approved barrier between the widened Yamato Road and the L forty-two canal that runs alongside Yamato Road. And it doesn't have to be barriers, could be cement blocks, could be whatever is approved by engineering.
Let me recognize the county administrator in that regard, if you don't mind, Commissioner Sacks.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
No, go on and finish.
Oh, okay. I think I'm done. I just want to make sure that, that you stated it when you gave your presentation, your initial presentation, but that has been of concern to me. And I think that it's, it's important that we, that we be able to understand that there has to be some type of approved barrier between the widened Yamato Road at that point, where it runs along, well, along, L forty-two runs alongside Yamato Road.
Commissioner, I, I know that you spoke with Mr. Ricks on yesterday on this issue, and I also spoke with you as well. We will be working closer with our consultants on this matter, and we will address and drill down specifically to look at the area in which we're widening. We will narrowly tailor whatever we're going to need to do in that area to make it safe, but we must also build in the fact that we have to comply with certain rules. And as long as we can comply with those rules, narrowly tailor the, the, this particular need, we will do so. It will, it will definitely be in the budget. And as I promised you, if we run into issues where we cannot meet those required standards, I will personally come to discuss that issue with you.
Then let me thank you also, besides thanking Mr. Ricks, our county administrator, Baker, because this is an area in my district that is traveled heavily by residents, senior citizens of Whisfer Walk and Century Village. And there is a barrier up from, running from four forty-one to Lyons Road that is a guardrail. And that's why I said approved barrier, because it may be that a guardrail of the type that was used up to that point may not be approved by the FDOT or even our own Office of Engineering. So whatever barrier there, that can be approved, that is very important to me for my district and for the residents who, who use that road. So I'm not going to say guardrail. I'm going to say whatever approved barrier, and it could be cement blocks or whatever is approved, but that is essentially extremely important to me in my district. So thank you so much for that, for that commitment. Thank you, Mr. Ricks, and, and your staff of engineers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. And if it's important to you, it's important to the rest of the board, so we appreciate your work on that issue. Commissioner McKinley, then to Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Thank you. Commissioner Moreno, I have a good solution for the North Lake Boulevard numbers issue. Let's just get it constructed.
Yeah, exactly. I'm, I'm with that.
It, it, this, this process is very frustrating. I'm going to go ahead and move approval of this item, but want to state on the record that I am adamantly opposed to the way the Coconut Boulevard project is currently being proposed. Have a commitment from staff to continue to look at that with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council and the Indian Shell Improvement District. I'm only moving this forward today because I don't want to lose the funding and our space in line, given how long it takes to get things done on roads in this county. So with that, I move approval.
Commissioner McKinley has moved agenda item five, C one four, to repeal or replace regarding the five-year road program, seconded by Commissioner Moreno. Vice Mayor Weinroth, you recognize.
Thank you. In District Four, I see we have another vascular bridge being repaired. When are we shutting that down? Do we have a schedule on that yet?
Uh, let me see here. Oh, well, this is scheduled for twenty-one, so it should happen here pretty fast. I can give you the, the contract has not gone out yet, and so, once we get a firm schedule, we'll definitely let you be aware of what's going.
All right, please, let's make sure that we get warning out to our residents. We know that these bridge closings in Boca become an issue for our constituents. East Palmetto Park Road, is that county or is that city? From the intercoastal to the ocean?
The, the road is county, however, the city has, we call it traffic control authority. And so there's elements of the, in terms of traffic control devices that they have authority over. And so, so we've been meeting with city staff in terms of what they want to do in terms of enhancing the walkability and walkability of those areas. So we're willing to work with them once they give us a plan.
All right. Well, we need to have a, some sort of a relationship between the city and the county on that road. I know that they have a, a list of requests to update the road for walkability, maybe some crosswalks, and I know it was part of their strategic planning session that they just did. So I'd like to ask you to reach out to the municipality to see what we need to be doing to program in whatever expenses are going to be necessary to upgrade that, once they've decided what they want to do.
Yes, sir. Will do.
Okay. ARP money, is any ARP money being considered for any of what's going on here, or is that going to be separate from what's in this five-year plan?
That's not con, that's not contemplated in this amendment right here.
Are we, I mean, I don't know what the numbers look like. Is there anything defined for roadway infrastructure, or is it just a big pot of money that we're going to make the allocation?
I will be finalizing, we're, we're actually not moving at warp speed as we did the first time, because the federal government recognizes that we need to thoroughly think these things through and make the, some recommendations to our boards. And so, once we allocate, we've got very large categories that we've talked about, that the ARPA kind of outlines, we can spend money on as long as it's COVID-related. And so, we'll be working those numbers up and coming to this board with a recommendation. I'm thinking probably in July, because then we'll hopefully have other information on dollars that the federal government is allocating, and what those dollars can be used for, so that we're not duplicating efforts. We can actually leverage the dollars we've got with whatever programs in those particular areas are funded in other methods.
Okay. I, I think there's probably going to be another pot of money for infrastructure improvements, and certainly, I'd like to see us thinking ahead as far as what we can have shovel-ready so that we can have a, an opportunity to take advantage of whatever might be put out there. And I'm going to ask that maybe we start studying what the Boring Company is proposing for tunneling. I know City of Boca Raton and the City of Fort Lauderdale are already having conversation with the Musk Company with respect to tunneling in areas of conflict between, well, in Fort Lauderdale, they're talking about going under the New River.
Yeah, they are.
And, and, you know, tunneling under that, using the Boring Company. I know in the City of Boca Raton, they're talking about potentially an opportunity underneath the, the tracts where they cross Palmetto and Glades. So I would like to see perhaps if we can be looking at what that is as, as far as a potential. I understand most of these projects are in municipalities versus unincorporated, but I'm assuming since they're probably county roads, that there's going to be some funding through the county and some through the municipality. And again.
We plan on leveraging dollars, working with our municipalities. However, that is, those certain issues I will bring to this board. I do know that Broward has been dealing with the potential of borrowing under the New River to get, what's the name of the train? Bright Line, through there. That's a very, very costly project. And so, but that's going to be on, on them. I, we'll, we'll look at this, but it's an issue, those types of unique situations we'll bring to the board under a different.
And, and, you know, this might be something to be coming through TPA, but again, I think that we need to be looking at this, you know, if there's going to be a lot of money flowing from the federal government, we need to have, you know, the projects ready, and if this is something that makes sense going forward, we need to be working with TPA municipalities in the county and figure out if this is something that's appropriate going forward. One last question. You were talking about stormwater projects. Does this include any back, backflow gates to make sure that as we're getting sea level rise, we're not going to wind up with ocean water flowing back into our stormwater system?
We haven't gotten that level. We have not got that level of design yet. Right now, we're looking basically replacing the existing infrastructure in terms of the piping itself, but in terms of enhancing, we have not got to the level of, of design effort yet. So right now, we're just doing some rudimentary assessments in terms of the existing infrastructure. Our next step is, hey, what are we going to do to enhance it for resiliency? That's the next level of our, of our, of our plan.
And, and again, I think resiliency certainly is something we need to keep on the forefront, and as the, you know, the sea level continues to creep up, we want to make sure that we're not going to wind up with issues with stormwater backing up on us. That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth. That concludes comments and questions by members of the board on Agenda Item Five, C one. The board thanks the professional staff, the administrator in advance for ensuring that we communicate answers to the questions that were asked and requests for information. The motion has been made by Commissioner McKinley and seconded by Commissioner Moreno. No further comments, all in favor? All opposed? The item passes six to zero with Commissioner Weiss off the dais. That concludes the regular agenda. We'll move now to Agenda Item Six, A, Board Appointments, Commissioned Districts. We'll start to my right with District Appointments with Commissioner McKinley.
I don't have any.
Very good. Commissioner Moreno.
None at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Weinroth.
None at this time.
I have no appointments for District Three. Commissioner Bernard.
None, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Weiss, District Appointments. Commissioner Sacks. Very good, thank you. We'll move now to Agenda Item Seven, A one, Administration Comments Regarding Board Directive Report. You recognize, Madam Administrator.
This is our board directive. It has been submitted to you. We've got a couple of projects in here that we need to update, but just, you know, we're currently working with Commissioner Sacks as the board directed on the economic and technical summit. We're working out the early details on that particular issue. We've got something scheduled with the Business Development Board representative regarding the business relocation incentives. Reservoir project we're still working on. Most of these will, will be able to focus again specifically on getting these done. Hopefully, now that COVID nineteen is on the decline, hopefully it stays that way, and then we can get fully back to our day-to-day functions. So if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer any. Other than that, I'll ask you to adopt.
Questions by members of the board?
Motion received and filed.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, received and filed, Agenda Item Seven, A one, Board Directive, seconded by Commissioner Moreno. All in favor? All opposed? Seven, A one, motion received and filed, passes seven to zero. We'll move now to the county attorney's office.
Oh, I've already done that, so thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Madam Administrator.
I'm sorry, I've been, I was trying not to talk, but I, I have to reckon, we did John, but I also want to recognize Dorit Miller. Dorit was chosen by the, um, leader, but chosen by Leadership Palm Beach County as Leader Award, and she received that last week. So I do want to recognize Dorit on that award. So please join me in recognizing her. And it's called the Leadership Excellent Award, and that again is from Leadership Palm Beach County, so we are very proud of her.
Well, that certainly comes as no surprise to those members on the board and the administrator. Congratulations, ma'am, on your recognition. It's well-deserved. Further comments, Madam Administrator?
That's it.
All right. Madam County Attorney.
I already spoke, but I promised that I will deduct that from my final board meeting speech, because I know when I do no comment, I just keep on adding on to that, that length, that speech, so I'll make sure I deduct some this time.
Very good. All right. Agenda Item Eight, Commissioner Comments. We'll start with District One, Commissioner Maria Moreno.
All righty. Lisa, can you cue up some pictures? Let's see what we got here.
Oh, gosh.
All right. I want you to, I want you to notice who's on the mound, throwing out the first pitch at the ballpark of the Palm Beaches as we welcome Team USA, who have now gotten their ticket to the Olympics. And I'd like you to look about four feet above Hall of Famer Johnny Bench catcher, standing at home plate, looking at the mayor, because if you look at about four feet above his head, you'll see a baseball. So.
Check to any videos, by the way.
Well, I was going to put it in a loop so you could see the video, but I decided not to do that. But as, as our mayor was told, never bounce it over the plate, make sure you, so he made sure he didn't bounce it over the plate. And I do like to thank all of the baseball Hall of Famers and retired players that came out to support Team USA, including Bucky Dent and Big Pappy and Jeff Conine, and, and obviously here, my neighbor, Johnny. But also now, now go to the next video.
It should be noted that Poppy, Big Pappy capped his baseball.
That's true.
Single-handedly.
Yeah. Okay. So instead of doing the first pitch at the Hometown Heroes event, I asked if I could do the first chip. So I just want you to know that it went right into the catcher's mitt without him having to move. But it was, you know, it's fun to do these events off-site, and just want everyone to know that, you know, our, our county commissioners are active all over the county, and it was my honor and thanks Maria Sacks to starting, putting together the Hometown Heroes event up in District One at the Roger Dean Chevrolet Stadium, and it was, good fun was had by all. Thank you. And also, I do want to congratulate, and Melissa, this may be, you may be talking about this, the Parks Award? Did you, okay. The National Association of County Parks and Recreation officials have, we are the proud recipient, recipient of the 2021 award in the social justice category for the Glades region, and I just want to give a shout-out to our Parks and Rec Department, who run over a hundred and ten parks, so a big kudos to them and just a big thank you, and please come out and use our parks. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno, and thank you for the media and visuals. I've been accused of overcompensating on occasion, and there is.
You know, I could say something about there being athletes on this board, but I'm not going to say anything about that.
And if I can get a copy of that picture.
Absolutely.
I may frame it. That's awesome. District Two, Commissioner Weiss, comment, sir.
Thank you. I just, a couple of things, I acknowledge that we went out on Saturday to Lake Worth Beach. They had a wonderful celebration for Pride Month there, and, and we had a ride with Pride Bus, fully wrapped, there. And to remind you all, it's outside now, and after this, as soon as we get out of here on Third Street, we can go have our pictures taken with that, with that great bus. So, thank you.
Very good. I look forward to joining you, Commissioner Weiss, for that picture. We'll move now to Commissioner Maria Sacks from District Five.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And I do want to say, we do have a number of athletes on this board. We, in, in the county commissioner, we went through a lot for COVID, but we, but those of us also remembered our hometown heroes at that Roger Dean Chevrolet Stadium. So a big thank you for Mike Bauer at this stadium, and also for our county commissioner, Greg Weiss, who was there, and our county administrator who was there, and of course, we have our very own county commissioner, Moreno, who did probably the first time in history at that stadium, chipped a pitch to, to the catcher.
history at that stadium, chipped a pitch to, to the catcher. He was a professional catcher. It was a little disconcerting at first, but she put it right into the, right into the mitt. It was perfectly, perfectly done. Thank you so much, all of you, for supporting our hometown heroes at that game. And yes, June is Gay Pride Month. We're all, I'm going to be down there on Third Street right after this meeting to take a picture with the, with the Palm Tram. And kudos to Palm Tram and Mr. Clinton for recognizing Gay Pride Month. And there will be ceremonies throughout the county. We'll all be there as, as many as we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. We'll move now to Commissioner Melissa McKinley, District Six.
Thank you. And Commissioner Weiss, I want to thank you for being at the pride event in Lake Worth. I was not able to attend. If I've learned anything after the last year, it's enjoy family when you can. And my nephew turned one. I went over to Sarasota, should come as no surprise. I gave him his first fire truck, and it seems to be one of his favorite toys. But also, congratulations to Team USA for getting that birth into the Olympics. And Ms. Baker, please extend our thanks to George Lindley and the Palm Beach County Sports Commission. His partnership with St. Lucie County led to this being a successful event, so very grateful for that. I do have a couple of comments. Let me go with the easy one first. I sent out a memo to the board yesterday regarding Family Day. This is sort of following the lead of Leon County. This came as a result of a meeting that I had with Ron Sacks in Tallahassee earlier this year. It's an initiative he started in his home county, and he, I promised him, if he got it through, the Leon County Commission, that we would take it up here. It's simply to recognize the day after Thanksgiving as Family Day, and highlighting activities around our county that families can go out and do. I also like to point out that we will be the home of not one, but two REI outdoor sports, sporting goods, and they do a national, and maybe there's a partnership opportunity there. They do a national campaign the day after Thanksgiving. They call it Opt Outside. So we may be able to try to partner with them. But this is to bring back to us at our next commission, a resolution recognizing the day after Thanksgiving as Family Day in Palm Beach County. And I just ask, we give staff direction on that.
Very good. Without objection.
Okay. And then, I, two other items. The first one, I just wanted to bring to your attention, that last week, at the call of Mayor Keith James from the City of West Palm Beach, and on behalf of Congresswoman Lois Frankel, we did hold a stakeholders' meeting with a number of cities and counties that are impacted by the decisions surrounding Loosum and the Lake Okachobee release schedule. We are expecting tomorrow that the Army Corps will be announcing its top five modeling schedules, and they have, they have decided that sometime in July, with about a 30-day timeframe, that they're going to pick one of those five. And the stakeholders that we had at the table represented municipalities, county governments, and the agricultural community, and other stakeholders, to request to the Army Corps that they give us 90 days to run those models appropriately. Todd and his team are currently working within the confines of our federal legislative agenda to do a partnership letter under the mayor's signature, supporting that request. And I'd really want to thank Congresswoman Lois Frankel for stepping up to the plate. She's been a tremendous advocate on this issue, very quietly behind the scenes in her position on the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee in Washington, but more so because of the governor's decisions, a large portion of this area that will be most impacted is in my district, that currently, right now, is lacking a member of Congress and won't have one until January. So all of these conversations are taking without that, are being, are taking place without that district having representation. And I'm very grateful to Congresswoman Frankel's leadership on this issue. It should be noted that this isn't a rural issue, while certainly there are counties and cities around Lake Okachobee that this is their sole supply of water. The large South Florida counties, it's our backup water supply, and so it's a water supply issue as much as it is a public safety issue, and Todd is working on that letter. My last item, and unfortunately, I, I hate to do this, but Commissioner Weinroth, I have to call you out. You tweeted something out this morning that was incorrect. I am not bringing forward a resolution to suggest that we bifurcate the, the Emergency Food Assistance Program contract with Broward County. We already decided unanimously, early last year, to make that request to the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. That request was honored. We are the third-largest county in the state of Florida geographically. We are widely spread out and extremely diverse in our needs. And this board decided on a 6-0 vote, Commissioner Berger was absent at the time, to, to support that request, to FDAX, asking that we receive our own contract. So what I am asking today, and that request was honored, that RFP went out, those decisions were made by a selection committee. I am asking that we approve or consider a resolution at next week's meeting, thanking the Department of Agriculture for honoring that request for a separate contract, and stating that we look forward to working with our new partner, which I believe is Farm Share. We look forward to establishing that new relationship and assuring that there will be no interruption in services to those that need food in our community. But certainly, I'm not getting involved in any of the other politics that are surrounding this. Just want to acknowledge that we made a request. It was honored. The process went through. We have a new partner, and we look forward, moving forward with them, and that would be in the form of a resolution for consideration at our meeting on June 15th. That's my sta, request for staff direction, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. We look forward to seeing the contents of that proposed resolution. Vice Mayor Weinroth, do you have any response or any comments regarding that issue?
I stand corrected.
Very good. Further comments, Commissioner McKinley?
No, sir.
All right. Commissioner Bernard, you recognize, or Commissioner of District Seven?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. Well, it's, it looks like it's more than a couple of things. So as many people on the 12th floor knows that Darren Romulus, who was my administrative assistant, he left my office and moved to Greener Pastures, and he's now with Palm Beach County Fire. And we've, I just want to thank Doug Crane, Todd Von Laren, in the past several weeks, they've provided assistance to us. And so we have Rolando Martinez, who's here, who's been assisting our office. So thank you very much, Rolando, for assisting our office. Second, Ben Stahl is also here. Now, Ben was an intern with us while he was in high school, and I don't think, he probably don't like me that much. He came back, and he's in his third year as a junior at American University, and so he's our intern right now in our office. So we're very happy with the work that Ben is doing in our office. Second issue is, the month of June is a diverse month, and I would like to take the time to acknowledge and bring awareness to important initiatives and events taking place this month. Want to thank Palm Tran, under the leadership of Clinton Forbes and his whole operation, Todd, for the Rainbow Pride Bus, and also we get the chance to take the pictures. You know, that's really great leadership on behalf of Palm Tran and the county. Caribbean Awareness Month, Gun Violence Prevention Day, and also World Sickle Cell Day. And next week, I'll be bringing a proclamation on behalf of June 10th. So these are my comments.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, and we wish Darren the best. What, what type of work will he be doing for fire rescue?
He's going to be fighting fire.
No way. Well, he got a lot of good practice on the 12th floor, so good for him. That is awesome. We're very proud of him and his, and his work and his future. So thank you for your comments. We'll move now to Vice Mayor Weinroth for comments.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to request two off-site proclamations declaring June 21st Make Music in Palm Beach County Day, and also an off-site proclamation recognizing Torah Academy of Boca Raton's 22nd Anniversary Dinner.
Motion's been made for two off-site proclamations by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor? All opposed? That passes seven to zero.
Thank you. And then also, as I sent a note around to my colleagues, I would like to request that staff create a resolution for the June 15th board meeting in support of the Anti-Defamation League's request condemning hate and extremism. And also, I would like to request that staff create a resolution for the July 13th board meeting in support of the American Jewish Committee's request combating antisemitism in our community.
And that's in the form of staff direction to bring those, those resolutions back, I assume?
Yes, Mayor.
Very good. Without objection, we look forward to seeing the contents of those resolutions.
Thank you very much. And then, my final comment is, I'm never going to be mistaken as an athlete, and I certainly compliment my colleague over here, 30 years of experience on the, on the, on the golf course, and certainly, I've never seen a, a baseball hit that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth, for those comments. And my only comments will be asking Vice Mayor Weinroth to make a motion to approve the Declaration of June 7th through 11th, 2021, as code enforcement officers appreciation of my...
And it would be my pleasure to do so.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor? All opposed? That item passes seven to zero. And then I'll close by just thanking the members of the board and professional staff for a very productive and efficient day here in local government in Palm Beach County. Thank you very much. The Board of County Commissioners is adjourned.
Not adjourned, recessed.
Oh, matters by the public? Oh, but I already said adjourned. We'll be back at 2:00, so we're going to go into recess, and then we're all invited to Third Street for the Pride Bus picture. We'll see y'all there.
Matter...
You are, with wishful thinking.